arrives here for this evening. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next month's meeting is going to be Tuesday, August 13th. We do not have minutes to approve. Just haven't gotten approved on it yet, so. Just for the public's understanding of how tonight's meeting runs, we do start with public hearings or adjourned public hearings. Those are where the Board has already had an opportunity to review the request for an appeal and have now invited the neighbors and the public to come and comment on any of these requests for variances. So those public hearings will do first, and then at the conclusion of the public hearings, we will then go into reviews, which are generally appeals and applications which we have not seen before, although I think there's one or two that we have visited once, we have seen once before, but we've had some additional work to do on them before they're ready. So the reviews will not be an opportunity for public comment, only the public hearings. So with that, we're going to start. Item number one is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3627 Conradi, David Conradi, 55 Clope Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for his pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, a 7-foot front line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming 10-foot by 10-foot shed, a 16-foot front line variance for an existing awning, and a variance to allow a proposed 26-foot by 26-foot shed and a 10-foot by 10-foot shed and awning to be in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-120 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing? Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. All right, so the public hearing is back open. We did hear this last time. We did have some discussion with one of the neighbors relative to this application. We did make some adjustments to the location of the shed based on that discussion, but we did notice that the, some of the noticing wasn't actually done right, so that's why we went out and we noticed this application, just to be sure that everybody was clear on what was being proposed here. So with that being said, is there anyone here to speak for or against Mr. Conradi's appeal for the various variances at his property? No? Seeing none? Oh, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the zoning board. Again, my name is Tom McDonald. We spoke last time, you may recall. I have no objection to any of your variances. I just wanted to confirm that what we agreed on, that shed is going to be 50 feet from my property line or more, is what's going to be happening, that's all.
Where we discussed moving it last time, that shed is now, no longer needs the variance for the setback, now it just needs a variance because it's now going to be in front of the rear line of the house. So the house will now block it from the view of your property.
Exactly. Just confirming that.
That's exactly what's now stated in what was noticed.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Could we ask you to just sign in, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, and for anybody that speaks, we just asked that we have a record of your name for the minutes, that's all. Anybody else seeing none? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a, Pam, do we have a resolution on this one? Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Appeal number 3627, David Conradi, 25-foot rear line variance for proposed 26-by-26 shed, a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing house, an 18-foot rear line variance for the existing gazebo, a 16-foot front line variance for an existing awning, and a 7-foot variance for an existing 10-by-10 shed. 55 Clope Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, tax map 6458-03-437370, and it's a zoning district harbor. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 26-by-26 shed, a 10-foot rear line variance for the existing house, an 18-foot rear line variance for the existing gazebo, a 16-foot front line variance for an existing awning, and a 7-foot front line variance for an existing 10-by-10 shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this section is a Type II action under secret and no further action is required and where a legal notice was published in the Southern Ventus News, the official newspaper of the town, on May 29, 2013, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on June 11, 2013, whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of this variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as this is a flag lot and there is not a lot of acreage behind the rear line of the dwelling. The variance is requested, it's not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on impact or physical, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by David Conradi, 55 Clope Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, for a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 26-by-26 shed, a 10-foot rear line variance for the existing house, an 18-foot rear line variance for the existing gazebo, a 16-foot front line variance for an existing awning, and a 7-foot front line variance for an existing 10-by-10 shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning board. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and copy sent to the applicant or owner.
Is there a second?
I think you need to update the, was that based off the original?
Yeah. You gotta take the 25-foot rear line out. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yep. Okay, so we're going to take out the 25-foot rear line variance. That speaks to Mr. McDonald's issue.
And you get a front. In front of the rear line.
Yeah.
I'll put this blur in.
Yeah, can we, in essence, we're going to wholesale do a replacement of what's now in the minutes and the agenda with, so we're going to replace with agenda language.
Right.
All right, so you're making that amendment?
I'm making one.
Thank you.
And I also want to add that the public hearing was held also today. I think it's, it's just the jury.
Yeah, this is, okay, so, and continued on.
Seven nine.
Yeah. Pam, the first whereas also has to be replaced with the other language from the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
With those amendments, I think we have a second.
Okay. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Myself, well, actually Mary first.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries. Okay? So now what you'll do is you'll see the building department in the morning. Okay? Please pass us Pam so she has those instructions. All right, item number two. Appeal 3618 Meyer. William C. Meyer, 4 Spring Meadow Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 45-foot rear line variance for a proposed 11-foot by 16-foot garden shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing? Second? On favor? All right. The issue related to this request is that there is a property line dispute in the rear of the property. This has now been going on for a couple of months because we gave the applicant time to resolve the issue. The issue apparently has still not been resolved, but I'm going to ask you, Mr. Meyer, come on up to the microphone. I know you've been trying, you've been, you know, working with your title company, et cetera, and I know you did send us a new letter. So just here it is. So if you want to just give us an update where you are now so your neighbors also understand just in case they're.
Unfortunately, the title, insurance company is a New Jersey-based company, and right now they're still totally backlog with all kinds of hurricane sandy issues. So, you know, we're in the queue, but, you know, we're probably still low because they're still working on the hurricane sandy issues. So what we did, is an update, on June 20th, we did submit to the board some status, and we also felt that one of the things we possibly could do would be is to move the shed further into the trees, which is I'm going to have to scalp them even more than I had thought, all right, which then the shed is no longer on Mr. Davy's property that he claims. So we're just wondering if that would be an option to the board to remove.
Okay, but.
You know, remove the issue from the board, the property line issue, with the option that once we get it resolved and if it goes back to, as I stated in the letter, the original deed for the subdivision, that I could move it back to, once that's resolved.
And until you know what that rear property line is, I don't know how we make a determination and what's the appropriate variance that you're seeking, so.
Well, right now, it's, I was seeking a 5-foot.
Right.
All right, and Mr. Davy says, no, that would be on his property.
Right.
And there is a fence where he claims is his property, and there's a fence where I claim it's my property. So what I would do would be move it on to the north side of what he claims where the fence is, so I would not be on his property. And then once it gets resolved, then if it, depending on where, if it goes back to the original survey of the subdivision, then I would be able to move it back to where it, the original application.
I guess the issue is, is if we know where the property line is, we could say you need a 10-foot variance or whatever, and then that's where you would put it.
Well, you have.
The question is, I guess another way of phrasing it is, can we grant, for example, a 20-foot variance, and depending on where the property line ends up, as long as it's 20 feet away, do we care? I mean, that's, that's the problem for us.
I agree.
So you're saying the same thing. You want an X amount of variance, and wherever that property line is at being, that's how far away you're going to be.
Well, right now, there's.
But we don't really know what variance you need without knowing where the property line is.
Right.
So it's a circular reasoning.
Well, there's, right now, there's two lines. One, my survey says, and another one, Mr. Davy claims that that's his. I'm going to be off of where he claims.
I understand that. But how do we find, define that?
Well, what I would do would be, right now, I was saying 5 feet from my property line, which is the survey on record in the county. All right, now I'm saying instead of 5 feet, I'd come 8 feet.
Okay, suppose we say we grant you a variance which says you're 8 feet away from that spot.
Well, it's from the.
We have to say from a property line. We've got to, we've got to set a definite variance.
Well, it would be from the property line, or my survey, which is on record in the county.
Okay, so if we accommodate that, you're saying, well, this is still the problem. I understand your desire to be on what is definitely your property as opposed to what your neighbor is saying. But without knowing the property line, how far, how much of a variance do we give you? If you're correct, and your property line is where you say it is, and you say you're going to put it, this is the property line that you say, and you're going to put the shed here to make sure you're on the side of where he says the property line is, are we giving you, you know, a 10-foot variance, or are we giving you a 13-foot variance?
Well.
We can only grant one or the other, so, you know, if we grant you 10, from what's the property line? We don't, we.
There's still, he's still asking for the 5-foot. The question, and what he's, what he's offering to do is the 5 feet from what his neighbor is saying the property line is, rather than the 5 foot from what he thinks is, is the, from his own property line. So I guess the question still becomes, you know, why, if we now were to move it when before we couldn't move it, why does it, I still don't understand why it just can't be moved even closer to the house. I guess that's my fundamental issue.
Well, where I'm trying to put it, I'm right up into those trees now. I mean, to me, that's the best spot for everybody to, as far as, you know, visual from the different roads from my neighbors.
I mean, I know we had a discussion early on about why not right against the house.
That.
Then you have no variance issue at all.
Yeah.
So it's, but that's, I'm just one.
Yeah. All I was trying to do is, you know, move it up, so it's not, what Mr. Davy says is on his property, to, you know.
Did your title company give you any sense of when they're going to be resolved with this issue?
I mean, I've had numerous, long, heated phone conversations with them and even the New Jersey Banking Insurance Company, and, you know, just, it's a slow process, and we're, plus we're, you know, in the queue, and there's just so much activity down in New Jersey. Unfortunately, it's a New Jersey-based company.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I was going to ask counsel, do you, again, one of my colleagues is suggesting that the difference between, you know, a variance, but again, based on two different set of property lines. So what would you recommend? Or what are your positions?
Well, it's trying to nail, it's trying to nail a moving target here.
Right.
The board was correct when they've said at the outset that it's a problem giving a variance where you don't know the property line is. The only way you could possibly have some interim solution is to actually stake an area of the properties where everyone agrees it can reside, if that's acceptable, for a period of while they have their litigation going. So it's simply a temporary boundary line understanding.
Basically, what I'm saying is.
But the board has a real problem. We can't measure from what we don't know is the base point.
Well, I'm using the, my survey is the base point.
Right.
Which is the survey that's.
There could be a different, there could be a different view of that.
Well, there is, but what I'm saying is, the objection of the neighbor was that it was going to be on his property. So what I'm trying to do is move that.
Since you quoted, in your letter, you quoted Mr. Davy from last time. You said that when asked if he had any objection to the location of the shed, Mr. Ken Davy responded, "Not particularly." Is there any way the two of you could reach some temporary understanding until there's a final?
Well, I mean, he is here, so he can speak on, based on what, you know, my proposal is.
But I'm saying, given what you indicated in your letter, do you think the two of you could strike some kind of temporary measure? See, you know, because for us to give a full variance without knowing the property line is a tough thing to do.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure we could do it. And we have to issue a building permit from the building department.
Without a variance, we can't issue a building permit.
And the problem is, sir, is I understand, again, what you're trying to say, maybe if I read word, but I see the problem being. You're going to move it over, and you want a variance based on your property.
Correct.
So let's say you're going to move it, you know, the additional 3 feet in, that's the issue, right?
Yes.
Just 3 feet.
Yep.
So you're requesting a 45-foot rear line variance. So going from your line, we're going to give you, let's say, a 42-foot variance, right? Because you're coming in 3 more feet. If it ends up that you're wrong, and it's his property line, you're going to have to move the shed even in further.
Right, right.
And are we really in agreement that the discrepancy is only 3 feet?
I don't know.
No, I'm saying we're.
I'm just giving it as an example.
I think there's different viewpoints.
So my point is, if you end up losing, it's going to come in even further. You're going to be in the midst of a tree, you're going to have to take them down.
And I'm just not comfortable acting on information that's not clear, so.
You have a moving target.
Yeah, again, from my perspective, I mean, we have an applicant who is patiently working with the various folks, and, you know, I mean, the applicant is trying to put a garden shed, it's only 11 feet by 16 feet. We sort of suggest that it not be a prominent shed so that it can be moved in case there's a dispute, so that it moves 5 feet from wherever the property line is. I mean, it is a burden.
11 feet by 16 feet is a significant shed. It's not, you're not just going to drag, you know, push it and drag it a little bit. And it requires a permit, so. Yeah. I mean, once we sign off on it, it just, I don't think it can be done, really. Because both property lines may come back not right.
They could have too.
A property line dispute could end up totally somewhere else.
That's a possibility, but that is the real problem. We have to grant you a set variance, and we have to use it from a set point of view. So to accommodate your neighbor, you're saying, well, I'll move it over, so we'll make the variance less. But if it ends up being his property, then you're going to have to, you would have to move it in right where you don't want it. You're going to have to cut all the trees down. I don't know how we could give you an answer.
Yeah, I just thought that that was possible solution to, to the, you know, the issue of that, and still get the property lines issue resolved.
The only information we have from Mr. Davy as to what his property line is was, he gave it to us on March 12th. And it's not clear to me, at least, others can look at this, where exactly the property line is. There's clearly some sense of dispute, but I can't even tell what the distance of that dispute is. So I'm very, very uncomfortable saying it might just be 3 feet, it might be 8 feet, I have no idea. And so for us to be able to consider your new, your new request here, it's just, we're not ready yet, I don't, I just don't think.
I agree with that.
So.
You have to have an established line to do a variance. We don't have an established line.
Okay.
All right, that's, unless somebody can give me more concrete information as to where Mr. Davy's thinks that line is.
Well, Mr. Davy would have to do that.
Huh?
I said, Mr. Davy would have to do that. You know, I can show you the survey and the county map.
Well, he does reference a filed map. You could go get a copy of that filed map. Like you said, what's here is not, just not clear enough for anybody to be able to see that.
I mean, the one I have is the certified map from the county that I.
That was filed with yours, as opposed to what he's saying is the certified map filed for his.
Correct.
That's all, so.
All right.
We've got to resolve this difference. All right? Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? Otherwise, I'm not sure if Mr. Davy wants to offer anything.
I don't.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Mr. Meyer for the 5-foot rear line variance? Hearing our discussion tonight, Mr. Davy, is there anything else you'd like to offer?
I just.
You have to come to the mic.
Yeah, please come to the microphone, so it's.
I think this has been going on for about four or five months now, and.
Since, since February. In March, we started the public hearing.
And I've been waiting to hear from his title company, or, you know, whatever it is that he has, that he wants to offer in terms of resolving this. I, it's a lot more complicated than what has been stated at the meeting tonight, and there have been surveys done. In fact, the survey that was used by our title company was Beatty and Watson. Glenn Watson did the survey, and that was signed off by six different surveyors because they understood the implications involved here. I would also mention, and this was brought to the board's attention several years ago when this whole thing started, we brought to the attention of the board that an independent analysis of the other side's survey indicated that it was a terribly written deed. And that comes from the Poughkeepsie, I gave, I presented that to you, I think, when Mr. Schollen was putting up his shed. And at that time, the agreement with Mr. Schollen's shed was that if that line changed, again, it would present some problems, but he put his shed 20 feet away from, and up in that corner of where his shed is, there's really not a dispute.
Okay.
It becomes more and more severe as we get down towards Mr. Meyer's property.
Yeah, the other fellow had more of a safe harbor resolution where you could put it in an area that wasn't contested, but this is more contested.
This is, oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Okay, so the dilemma we have at this point is, because again, you're patiently coming meeting after meeting after meeting and waiting for some resolution. We don't want to waste your time, the same as we don't want to waste Mr. Watt Meyer's time. So I guess our, the question is, what's an appropriate action at this point? Do, does Mr. Meyer withdraw his application without any, you know, without any penalty or anything, and he just resubmits it at such time as the issue is resolved?
That's one thing. Or adjourn it a sufficient time, get a final report and do that.
But what's, we have no idea what a sufficient time is. Who would have thought we'd still, we'd be here at this point?
I agree.
I did.
You did?
I think it'll be another year before anything.
That's what I'm worried about. And I don't want to have him keep coming back every 3 months with the.
You've seen New Jersey, but you're trying to get an insurance company to act where they may have messed up, and what are they going to do? Do you have a law, do you have a claim against them? You know, so, that's one possible remedy that they may be looking at as to what they want to do in claiming other problems. You know.
We're not giving any legal advice here.
Yeah, I'm just speculating. You're not going to resolve that. You want a shed, I think you've got to look at another place to put it and try to come up with a plan.
Right.
I appreciate the aesthetics of what you're arguing for, but, I mean, we just can't do it. So the best suggestion, because I think it'll be a long time before you can answer, is probably to withdraw this application.
How does that work with, or are you submitting it?
Is there, because it's not his, in this case, it's not his fault, so can we just, like. Put it on hold until he comes? I know, that's what I'm just wondering. Can we just do it to a date uncertain and then renotice it at such time as?
I think we should do it a date certain if anyone's following along the public.
Right.
And then at that date certain, either goes ahead or it gets adjourned again, or it gets withdrawn. But we should do a date certain so the public, if they want to follow it. Obviously, these two gentlemen are interested, but there, someone else could say, I was following it also. So.
So, I mean, but a date certain 6 months away?
Oftentimes, when something like that, but maybe you want to, just to keep a leash on it, you do more like 3 or 4 months.
But what about just, we're drawing it, refunding it except $5, and given that it never does.
It's already been public, it's already a public hearing.
Yeah, so we pay for that.
The cost has already been incurred by the town. That's the dilemma, so.
What if you have him withdraw it and request the town board waive his fee?
Sure, they can do that.
Okay.
They can do that. That's a remedy.
All right, would that be sufficient if we, if we ask you to withdraw the application, but in the meantime, we go to the town board and make a request for them to waive the fee with any reapplication, with the resubmission of your application, so that you don't have to worry about that fee in the future? Because again, we recognize.
Well. If it's already, it's allowed until October or something like that.
Yeah, if we go out 4 months, I mean, yeah, you're, that's what you're looking at, October, November, 3, 4 months, so. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know how important the shed is to you and what you got to put into it.
And you don't think, putting the insurance companies aside, that you guys can talk to your own attorneys and try to resolve the issue without the intervention of the insurance company? No? Okay. I'll take it as a no.
One of the problems is that the line, it's a straight line that goes up through 4 lots.
Right.
So.
It's not an easy fix.
It's, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And, and, and the, the problem existed probably 4 or 5 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And we attempted to actually come to, do exactly what you asked, you're talking about now. We actually tried to do that.
Right.
And this just kind of dragged on, and we were, we always did everything in good faith, believe me.
Mr. Meyer, were you involved 4 or 5 years?
No, no, no.
He's caught in the middle.
I just wondered if they already had advance notice about this.
Okay. All right, so it's really your, our request to you is, do you want to go for 3 or 4 months, or do you want to withdraw and we'll make the.
I would say go through 4 months.
Okay.
It's easier to control it.
Is there anything else you wish to offer?
The only thing I would request is that I, that the board communicate with me with a personal letter that the meeting's coming up so that I don't have to check the, you know what I'm saying?
We give a date sign.
Because I was under the impression that this meeting was not even going to take place unless the insurance companies started talking with each other, and that hasn't happened.
Well, yes, at the end of last meeting, we adjourned it to July, and we asked for a status report by June 20th. So everything that we said has been complied with. But yes, we would give you a date tonight, the board's, or we withdraw and if it's readvertised, you get a date. But I think the board is thinking about the...
Well, he is requesting to not withdraw it at this point.
That's what I'm saying, so...
So if he's not withdrawing, can I be notified?
You'll be notified in the next five minutes.
You're going to hear right now.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Will you be October?
You're looking for October or November?
For November. Three months or four months?
You are, October.
October 8th or November 12th?
Is it 12th? You're asking for October? All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn to October 8th?
So moved.
You heard that, Mr. Davey?
Oh, they did October.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you're adjourned to October 8th? Mr. Davey, did you know that's the date? Again, we would request that you give us a status like the 20th of September, but we'll still expect to see you here, but at least we have some sense of what's going on at that point. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And so it continues. I did want to use the line and the survey says, but poor taste, sorry. All right, now we move on to our public hearings. These are first-time public hearings. They're not adjourned, so these are the first time that we're asking for public comment. We're going to start with item number three, appeal 3630 Luciano. Steve Luciano, 15 Prentice Drive, Hopple Junction is requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-99 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Luciano is present. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, as we discussed last time, there is some concern, I've told you I had driven by before our last meeting, and there's some concern about really whether that, that your fence is needed. And so, you know, I know some board members have had the opportunity to, to, you know, to go by and visit at this point. Did you bring any, us any pictures?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. How long is this fence? How, why, how many sections of it? Yeah, this is not what it looks like now.
No, that's simply to show the placement of where the fence was in 1993 and also the bulk of that existence.
Now, in addition, and what I never mentioned, quite frankly, because I didn't think I would have to, but relocating the fence to the rear line does expose two points of entry to my house, which currently are camouflaged by the fence. Now, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of mentioning that because I really didn't think that was pertinent, but if it is, I would certainly reference it today.
Okay. I mean, it appears that it is four sections. Although the last section just...
It's a little short, right.
Doesn't look like it's a full section.
It's not a full section.
Okay. I mean, I did try, take the time to drive by it again just to be sure that I wasn't missing something. And I actually had to back my car up several times to get a clear shot, because I took the iPad to take a picture and to get a clear shot of your, of the, to be able to see what the impact would be. Because even be, it's a four-foot by what, these are eight-foot sections?
Yeah.
So it's less than, it's probably maybe 30 feet that we're talking about?
Okay.
But the 30 feet isn't straight back clear. There's vegetation behind these fences. Number one, there's a second fence. There's a big fence behind that.
Yeah, that's a small fence.
But then there's vegetation behind there that really limits what anybody's going to be able to see in your rear yard.
It limits at this point because much of that is bent, is bent over and probably should be cleared. But, but the fact is, as you, as you drive down Prentice Drive and you come around the bend in front of, say, Mr. Manotti's house, which is 13, you actually have a clear view into the backyard. Around the bend. Maybe not when you're standing directly in front of the house, but anyone driving down the block has a clear, a clear view into the backyard, which clearly never existed previously. Obviously, it does now, as I said before, because of the storms that blew through and the number of trees that that came down in the process as a result. But from, you know, from my perspective, I mean, I've, I've come in here now, this is probably the third night. I've heard, you know, dissertations on other, on other presentations that were made, lot line variances, et cetera, et cetera. This encroaches on no one. And the fact of the matter is, the fence coming off the front line of the house or the rear line of the house, in my mind, has absolutely no significance to anyone but the owners.
But the dilemma is that your, there is a code. This board follows the code, and it's our job to review hardships demonstrated by complying with that code. We have had other requests for six-foot fences within, in front of the rear line of the house. And we've denied them, frankly, because there are other options to be able to achieve the privacy that you are potentially asking for. You haven't honestly stated a hardship in my mind, except potentially loss of privacy. Um, but the dilemma is that if you put in a couple shrubs, if you put in some evergreens, something like that, you can accomplish the same privacy that you're looking for.
I understand, I understand that, but then what you're basically telling me to do then is to hide the fence. By putting evergreens in front, in front of, I mean, I would be putting it where?
No, we're telling you to take it down.
Okay.
We're telling you it doesn't belong there.
I, I understand, I understand that. I understand that. So then you're also saying, in addition to that, moving it to the back line and then putting up other, installing other evergreens?
No. We're just saying, we're just, yeah, if you move this fence back, then you've achieved the privacy that you want. If you don't want to move the fence and you just want to take it down, then you can...
Oh, I understand that.
You can still achieve the privacy with shrubs or with some other means. That, that's all we're getting at. That having a six-foot fence is not the only means of achieving the privacy that you're trying to get at.
Okay.
That's our, that's...
I mean, I, I still beg to differ, but, you know. I mean, in addition, as I said, I'm now exposing two points of entry to my home that don't currently face the street.
There's two doors on the outside of the house?
No, there are two windows.
There's two window wells. Oh, okay. All right, well...
And that's, that's an issue for me. But again, I didn't think that that was, you know, a relevant point when I originally made an application.
And how high are these windows? Oh, there? The ones that are about...
Yeah, they're at ground level.
Yeah, about one cinder block off the ground and probably two cinder blocks high?
Yeah. It's enough for somebody to get in.
Okay.
So again, I mean, I understand that the ordinance exists, and I understand it exists for a reason, though it, it escapes me, quite frankly.
Are these for our file or are these going to...
If you choose to keep them, that's your, it's your discretion.
But the point as far as privacy can be accommodated without a variance as to those two windows. Again, we're obligated to follow the law. And you know, you do that. As I mentioned in the last hearing, there was somebody who had put a fence up in front of their property line, and he had to chop it, you know, he didn't take it down completely, but he cut it off.
I understand.
Made it, made it as good as it could to the cost.
For my own edification...
And he had, you know, he showed some hardship, so...
For my own edification, could someone explain to me the significance of those two lines as it relates to this request?
It doesn't matter the significance, honestly. It's the town code.
That's, that's what I want to hear.
Okay.
They determine that. They determine the significance. Any judicial body hearing what the law says doesn't determine whether or not...
It's just the law.
That's what the law, until the law gets changed.
Well, under what circumstances would you, I mean, I understand that you've denied it several times. What are the circumstances that someone would have to show that would, that would give rise to your deciding otherwise?
This, this board has approved either a less than two, a less than two-foot variance or a full variance. When it's warranted, it's not up to us to tell you what those circumstances are. The files are available, if you want to do your own research on that. But again, I don't think that any of those circumstances are present with the conditions you have on your property. So, all right, and there's a lot of other folks here waiting for their applications to be reviewed and heard. So that's all, I, you know, I'm just trying to keep us moving on. We haven't even heard from any of your neighbors if they're here yet. If you'd like, let's, let's hear from them and let's see. So is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Mr. Stephen Luciano, 15 Prentice Drive, Hopple Junction, requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Dave Wheatman, and I live directly across the street at 12 Prentice Drive.
Okay.
And from a visual point of view, the fence, either at the back of the line or at the front of the house, has no effect on my property at all.
Okay.
So...
That's fine, thank you.
You bet.
Can we ask you to sign in, please?
Sure.
My name is Sadoris Hamdi. I live on 17 Prentice Drive, right next to him. I do not see any issue with the fence. I actually, I'm an architect. It's quite aesthetically pleasing. I don't see the, probably it is the code, but unless it's an issue of safety, why you want to take it down, I don't see any other reason. I mean, unless you can explain to him that it could be a danger for someone.
Okay.
But I, I don't see an issue with it. Again, I find it very aesthetically pleasing, so.
Please, we ask you to just sign in. Thank you. We appreciate your thoughts on it. Anybody else? It's a pleasure, the board. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And do we want to, actually...
Anything to close and reserve?
Do we want to close and reserve on this one? Yeah.
Okay.
So can I have an amendment to that motion, Barbara, to close the public hearing, to close and reserve our decision to be issued within 62 days?
So moved.
Second.
All right, now all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, Mr. Luciano, we're not going to issue a decision tonight. We do have 62 days to make that decision. We will probably put it on the agenda for next time around if we've, you know, have the opportunity to think through our thoughts. Okay, we may just have a discussion at the next meeting related to this, but, you know, we will consider it. Okay? Closed and reserved. Okay. Item number four, appeal 3634 O'Sullivan. Mary Ellen O'Sullivan, 16 Tiger Road, Hopple Junction, is requesting a four-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing non-conforming house and a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 16-foot by 24-foot deck pursuant to sections 194-121, 194-130A3, and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance.
Motion to open the public...
Is Mrs. O'Sullivan here? Yes, you're, okay, good, thank you.
Motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we do have an open public hearing. Now, we will, when we reviewed this at our, at the last meeting, we do recognize that you have a home in Whirly, a home and property in Whirly Homes, which is an area that just because of the infrastructure that's there, that the lots there are smaller than regular lots. When we say that you have a pre-existing non-conforming house, that means that the setbacks that are now in place were not there when your house was built. So, you know, so we are, we're just going to give you, work on the variance associated with that while we're dealing with the issue that you really came for, which was to put a 16-foot by 24-foot proposed deck onto the property. And again, given the size of your backyard, you're, you're limit, you have significant limitations that unless the deck shrinks, there really is no way to accomplish. So if you can, just again, for your neighbors, that might be here. The reason for the 16-foot by 24-foot deck, if you can just explain that, we'd appreciate that.
Sure, just to have enough usable space in the backyard, which is, as you already noted, is so small to begin with. We do propose to build 25 feet from the property line on the rear and 15 feet from the side property line. So we would need the variance from the back and the side, I believe.
Okay. Is, is there a deck there now?
No, there's a stone patio. I have pictures, actually, I think there was a request.
Thank you.
Does the stone patio stay or does it move, or does it get covered by the deck?
That would get covered by the deck.
That's, that's actually why the size is 16 by 24. It's a little bit wider than what it is, but it went out farther. I think that, I think the patio went out like 14 and a half feet. So I talked to an engineer. He said you can't use it as a footing or anything because it'll move and everything. So what I proposed was to make the footings everything wider than that, so I didn't even have to mess with it.
So you could dig down outside that?
Yeah, so I didn't even have to disturb it at all. And that's just kind of the size. It got bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
Way it always works. And once you have it up, it'll be too small.
And I like this picture of the, of the sign.
Figured I'd include it.
We didn't know if you were going to drive by.
All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Numbered.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Mary Ellen O'Sullivan, 16 Tiger Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing non-conforming house and a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 16-foot by 24-foot deck? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Would somebody like to offer the resolution? Can we put these in our file, by the way?
Oh, absolutely.
Thought we had an official decision maker down there.
Yes, we do, there's one here.
Yeah, we do.
This one, this one, there is one.
There is one right there. Go ahead.
I have one. I thought maybe somebody else would have to do it.
Appeal number 3634 Mary Ellen O'Sullivan. A four-foot sideline variance for the pre-existing non-conforming house and a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 16-by-24 deck. 16 Tiger Road and Hopple Junction, tax map number 6357-04-551403, zoning district R1, resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a four-foot frontline variance for a pre-existing dwelling and a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 16-by-24 deck. Whereas the action is a type-two action under secret, no further action is required. Whereas legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official paper of the town, on June 26, 2013. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 9, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on the impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, as most of the homes in the neighborhood are pre-existing non-conforming. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Mary Ellen O'Sullivan for a four-foot frontline variance for the pre-existing dwelling and a 25-foot rear line variance for the proposed 16-by-24 deck pursuant to section 194-121, 194-130A, section 3, and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant or owner. Is there a second?
So moved, a second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, and your motion carries.
Okay, can I make one small note? I think you said frontline variance for the four-foot, and it's the sideline. I wanted to make sure.
I think you wrote four-foot sideline, didn't you?
Yeah, it's a four-foot sideline. I think you said frontline, so I wanted to.
Is it frontline for the existing?
But the advertising says sideline, so you're right. The resolution does say frontline, thank you for making that.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was...
It does...
Yeah, but it was advertising, it was sideline.
Here it says...
Yeah, it says frontline, place wrong.
Yeah.
All right, so Tara, making the motion to, you make a motion to amend? And Aziz say the motion's second, so you approve the amendments?
Correct.
All right, now all in favor of the amended resolution? Aye. Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much for that cast.
Oh, no problem.
You didn't want to have to come back.
No, thank you so much.
All right, please pass that one down to the panel. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, appeal 3635 Lehigh Lawns and Landscaping, Inc. Alan Lehigh of Lehigh Lawns and Landscaping, Inc. is requesting a 20-foot rear line variance for an existing building located at 10 Sprout Creek Court, Wapahers Falls. A 20-foot rear line variance for proposed storage bins to be used for mulch, stone, et cetera. A 19-foot frontline variance for the existing building and a five-foot lot coverage variance pursuant to section 194.7, 1.17 of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Francis Elmandorf. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good evening.
Good evening, Mark Day, representing Lehigh Landscaping. Project, as you all know, is the Minotaur floor site on Sprout Creek and Route 376. The applicant is purchasing the building. He has a landscaping, contracting organization. He would like to be able to store some materials, landscaping materials, in bins He would like to be able to store some materials, landscaping materials, in bins that right now on what is a vacant lot, but it's still part, parts of this piece. We're actually proposing to utilize a gravel parking area for his trucks and utility vehicles overnight. The project as it exists, the building that's on the project, is actually approximately twenty feet to closer to rear yard, twenty feet to closer to front yard, and we're also, as we exist, four-point-two percent higher than coverage. So we're asking for a five percent variance on that. Now, that was before we went to planning.
All right.
So, what happened at planning board, they had asked that we pay the ablins on the proposed gravel area. That put us at six-point-two over, so.
But, I thought you were offering up a parking space or two.
We did, but the owner, or the applicant, I should say, really doesn't want to cut this because there's a catch base in here.
Ah, okay.
So, we originally at the board agreed to cut that back, but we can't because there's a base in there, and I, I'll have nowhere to drain.
Right.
So, we're not able to do that. So I'm uncertain what the proceeding would be with this board. I mean, I can probably find it in other places, unfortunately, he was out of town, so I don't know if it, it's appropriate for the board to maybe grant a five percent, and we'll cut it back somewhere else on the site and get it towards five.
Well, that's, I know we asked, let's-
Go ahead.
Kind of think through that issue. We'll let John think through what our options might be, but I know we did discuss last time around what those bins were going to look like.
Yes.
Can you, again, for the neighbors, explain-
Yeah, basically-
The, the subsurface to them and the, and the look of them particularly as it relates to the trail.
The, the bins are actually behind a very heavily wooded area behind the trail. This is the entrance ramp to the trail, I'm just, so, does anybody want to see this?
This is the entrance ramp to the trail, and there's a, the trail's actually over here.
This is an access rail.
Right, that's up to the-
This is all heavily wooded, this was heavily wooded until they put this in, but this is all pretty heavily wooded. We are not cutting anything back behind it other than to get the bins. The bins are going to have concrete, or I should say hardened pad underneath, so that the equipment doesn't excavate while it's loading trucks. That's what put us over the top as far as the-
Is it asphalt, is it concrete?
It's going to be concrete.
What is it? It's going to be concrete, okay.
Yeah, it'll be concrete, and again, that was what put us over the top along with these now. But anyway, they're, they're actually concrete blocks that are used to separate the material and to provide weight so that when you're loading against it, it doesn't move. They'll not be seen from the rail trail because it is heavily vegetated. We are proposing landscaping in the back. The planning board asks that we put dust control, so we're going to propose sprinkler towers that would actually provide frequent moisture to keep that dust down, which we're showing in this plan, so.
Can you ask a question?
My concern was to be sure that there's no, nothing but mulch or stone in there, no rock salt or snow removal, that could be-
Absolutely, no salt.
That was a concern, yeah.
He has a site on Daily Road, which he has covered salt sheds, which that will remain on Daily Road.
Okay.
Can you make some of the coverage, the coverage areas that you made, like a semi-permeous material, like the parks, some of the parking spaces, like-
I could, but I don't know if the planning board gives me credit. I mean, the only new paving, paving we're putting on is right here and underneath the bins. This I really can't make permeus.
Right, you can't.
This I could, I could use, I could use a permeus paver. I don't know if the board gives me credit for it, though.
The German pavers that you pounded the ground, and you still have the drainage?
Actually, what I'd like to use is a Nico lock. If we did that, Nico lock looks like Unilock, but it sits on about a twelve-inch stone bed. It actually provides drainage storage. I, you know, that's an idea, I didn't bounce that off the board, but that would get us out of the permeus if this board-
That may be, if you want to go that way, may that maybe help you with us approving the five percent as advertised, and then you can try to sell that to the other board.
Man, if I can, I either, I, you know, I go back and we do something here. We, we can reduce this, but he's not, he- I agree with him. Because of the storm, so we haven't been able to plan it, so. But I could, I could do permeus, we've had success with Nico lock. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a pretty, it's a very thick block, but it sits on a nice bed of stone, and it's, it's suitable for truck traffic, plows don't catch it because it's wider at the joints than a typical segmented paver, so. It's a good idea, actually. And this is all gravel, so we would, we would be able to have the ability to, to dissipate stormwater.
Do you think that might work?
Oh, I'll do it.
I know you just want to come back again, come on. All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Not my eyes.
Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak for or against? Lehigh Lawns and Landscaping requests for a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing building located ten, at ten Sprout Creek Road, Wapanger Falls, a twenty-foot rear line variance for proposed storage bins to be used for mulch, stone, and not rock salt, a nineteen-foot front line variance for the existing building, and a five-foot, five percent lot coverage variance. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Is anybody else, I guess nobody, okay, so a second. I mean, my, so move.
Second. It's a long night in red. Second, all in favor? Aye. All right. There is a-
You exert your- Might. Okay. Appeal number thirty-six thirty-five, applicant Lehigh Lawns and Landscaping Incorporated, name of the project, a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing building, a twenty-foot rear line variance for a proposed storage bin, a nineteen-foot front line variance for an existing building, and a five percent lot coverage variance, located at ten Sprout Creek Court, Wapanger Falls. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied to the zoning board for a twenty-foot rear line variance for the existing building, a twenty-foot rear line variance for a proposed storage bin to be used for mulch, stone, top soil, and not-
And not rock salt.
And not rocks, rock salt. A front, nineteen-foot, a front line variance for existing building and a five-foot, a five percent lot coverage variance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on June twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June, uh, July ninth, two thousand thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the building is existing, and the applicant wishes to line up the bins for the mulch, et cetera, and have it in line with the building. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood, as this is an industrial zone. The applicant has agreed to plant trees and landscape in the rear end of the building as it backs up to the Duchess County Rail Trail. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves a request made by Lehigh Lawns and Landscaping Incorporated for a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing building, a twenty-foot rear line variance for a proposed storage bin for you, to be used for mulch, stone, et cetera, a nineteen-foot front line variance for the existing building, and a five percent lot coverage variance pursuant to section one ninety-four seventeen of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the owner, owner applicant.
Okay, let's stop right there for one second. Let's go back to that first whereas where we added in, but the and not rock salt, let's correct that language a little bit, if you don't mind. I, I'm going to suggest instead that we say, for proposed storage bins to be used for mulch, stone, top soil, and other landscaping materials, but not rock salt.
Okay.
All right?
And then delete it, et cetera.
There are any kind of snow melts.
Rock salt or other snow melts.
Just landscaping materials, not, not snow removal materials.
Okay, so, your, your amendment is incorporating this change, so is there a second to the, as amended, right? Second. Good, thank you. Any other discussion? Mark, the trees, you, where were we, where we, we are-
Yeah, we're going to be planting trees back in here.
Okay, behind the building itself, okay.
Right, because that's the only thing, this is all-
Right, that was all already dense material there, vegetation.
We're all behind-
Got it. All right, just making sure. And again, it's subject to the planning board, that the, the site plan that the planning board will approve.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Any other questions or discussions?
Did, did a landscaping, there, up there?
No, because he's got the landscape offer in the back, and he's putting in trees-
This guy's a landscaper, he's going to-
Yeah.
Pretty much dial it up.
That one we probably don't have to worry about.
You have to use that landscaping advertiser.
All right, so, votes as follows, Jim?
Second, do we have a second?
Yes, Tara, second. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right? You too. All right, please pass that back to. Okay, thank you. Item number six, appeal three six three six Beam, Joseph and Diane Beam, forty-seventh clove branch road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a variance to allow an existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed to remain five feet in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as we discussed last time around, this is a shed that doesn't normally require a permit, it's, it's small enough, it's low, it's less than the ten-foot by ten-foot. It was a shed that is put up, it has a concrete floor, so it's not, it's not movable. It is not, I mean, literally, if you slow down driving past there, there is such dense evergreens in the front of this house that it's just really not visible at all. But it is white, and what we did ask was that you plant a shrub or two in front of it.
We are in the process of doing that. We have purchased shrubs to go across the front of it and the back of it.
Okay, that, that's great, that's, so, so that, just in case something ever happens to those trees, you just want some kind of vegetation to be able to, to screen it. But again, because it was smaller than what you needed in terms of requiring a permit and stuff, we could understand how, and it's not visible to any neighbors.
No.
And only if you really dangerously slow down on clove branch road, can you barely-
Well, let's call it what it is, if you stop and look.
Well, yeah, that's, and I, I go by there often enough that, you know, I can look for it enough to see, there it is. All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Number.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Joseph and Diane Beam, forty-seventh clove branch road, requesting the variance to allow the existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed to remain five feet in front of the rear line of the dwelling? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second? All in favor? Aye. And?
Appeal number three six three six, applicant, it's Joseph and Diane Beam.
Do you need the microphone closer to Barbara?
Lisa would appreciate it if you have a microphone closer.
The project is variance to allow eight-foot by ten-foot shed to remain five feet in front of the rear line of the dwelling. Location is forty-seventh clove branch road, Hopewell Junction, tax map, map number six three five eight dash zero three dash four four one four one nine, zoning district R one, resolution offered by zoning board member Barbara Barosa, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board so he can keep an eight-foot by ten-foot shed five feet in front of the rear line of the dwelling. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on June twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July ninth, two thousand thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, as there are large evergreens along the front of the dwelling, shielding it from the view of, from the road, and the applicant has agreed to plant a shrub in front of it as well, in case something happens to the trees in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Joseph and Diane Beam for a variance to allow the existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed to remain five feet in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board should cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries. You're all second, okay? All right, that's it for our public hearings, at this point, we're now on reviews, so there will be no additional public comment at this, at tonight's meeting, so. Item number seven, appeal three six two five Kenna, Joseph Kenna, five thirty-eight Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville is requesting a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty-two-foot by thirty-four-foot garage, total seven hundred and forty-eight square feet pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, when last we saw you, we did request that you get a survey.
And I did.
And when to behold, this is where I can say, but we use the line, and the survey said, you have some issues we need to deal with.
Yes, I spoke to my neighbor on the bordering patio, okay? So, he agreed that we could probably work that out by changing maybe some of the lines there, maybe I can give him a piece towards the back of the property.
Okay, a lot of line realigning.
Change the line there, yeah, just to realign, and then we'll cut that piece in and solve that issue.
Okay, but there were other things, your boxing ring was also encroaching?
Right, well, that stuff's all moved, it's not, uh-
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's just a, just, just a wood, wood boxing ring, it's not, uh-
Okay, so, that is going to be moved?
Yes.
Okay, and then-
Yeah, as you can see for the proposed building that's going to be put on there, all of that gets removed and that-
Okay.
Kind of replaces it.
But now you're to the point where your pool, your edge of your pool is, appears to be right at the property line. So now we're going to have an issue that you're going to need a variance related to-
We're going to need a variance for that, yes.
But until you've determined what the lines are with your neighbor, and you do that official lot line realignment-
Okay.
Which requires planning board approval?
Generally, yes.
All right, so, it's going to be a couple months before you're ready to come back here?
Okay, does that deter my-
Unless we do it, do we do, it says a coordinated review?
We should do it as a coordinated review because-
We should, yeah.
It could come up with certain issues that trigger other variances.
Right.
So you should be doing a coordinated review with the two applications before the two boards.
Okay, so, what does that mean for him in terms of-
He should file a planning board application, we kind of go on two separate tracks, we go down around the same time, and coordinate it to a conclusion.
And which agency fights really an agency?
Generally, the planning board should be.
Oh, right, exactly. That's what I'm trying to-
Good answer.
Good answer to the question.
The planning board, yes.
Okay, so-
We're the sidecar.
So I think at this point, you need to resolve the issue with your landlord, with, not with your neighbor, so that-
Right.
A good sense as to exactly what that new lot line's going to be.
So, I could realign those lines, right?
Yes.
To resolve that issue, we could do a variance on the pool being close to the line over there, over-
Right.
I don't know what the exact dimensions have to be for that, and then obviously-
But you're still going to need a variance for the patio.
The building that I propose is a whole other animal, right?
Are you part of the same project?
Yeah, well, all can work on it as one application.
Does it have to be?
Why?
Yes.
I'd like to get it up.
But we can't work on this if there's violations on your property, and having your structure on your neighbor's property is a violation.
Okay, no problem.
Okay?
Yep.
So we're gonna actually put this application on hold, John, right? Because we need you to make application to the planning board.
We're aware of that, that we can publish our own public meeting.
And the issue, one of the issues is with the swimming pool?
One of the issues, multiple issues.
Yeah. But, I mean, should we point out, I mean, I don't know who would make that comment. Discussion with his neighbor, obviously he should be, I don't know what bad it is and what they're gonna do.
Well, here, you had a sense of all the, all the issues. All right, we're suggesting a lot line realignment is gonna be needed.
Well, you need a lot of your property.
Let's talk about buying that lot too, you know? The number's right, of course. But what I proposed to him was behind the rabbit cages, you see that kinda corner piece there?
Okay, but even the rabbit cages should not be where they are. All right, that's what we're saying, there's a lot of issues here.
There's rabbit, you know...
All right, because even the rabbit cages are supposed to have, they have a variance for...
Don't we live in the country over here? Don't we live in the country? Can I have a rabbit cage?
You can have a rabbit cage, just on the right part of your property, yes. Yes, and the chicken coop, yes.
I mean, is there an issue as...
That shouldn't, I know.
When the ground pool went in, I mean, that's... I mean, in doing the lot realignment, I don't know how much you can move your lot back there, maybe take care of that problem.
It does...
Your pool's supposed to be twenty-five feet from the lot line.
It never got closed out, that was one of the issues, and we wouldn't close it out without the survey, because we didn't, we thought it was too close to the property line.
Okay.
So he has not been issued a certificate of compliance for the pool yet.
Okay, so, and he won't until unless there's a variance granted, and he should've been twenty-five feet away.
That's why this is, just needs a whole coordinated review, but let's let the planning board take the...
I just wanna point that out to him in terms of talking to your neighbor as to what you're going to do, and how, I don't know how big his property is, and how much adjustment you have, but your pool's supposed to be twenty-five feet from the property line, and you may wanna keep that in mind. We've ne, I don't think we've ever granted a variance for that.
Well...
That's been a pretty strict requirement, so...
Well, he already needs fifteen feet for the patio, he's got another four point eight, fifteen point nine, he needs sixteen feet, plus the five he has.
I mean, if he got...
So it's...
I'm not worried about the patio, the pool itself, yeah.
I know, but by getting the patio on his own property, by doing that lot line adjustment, that already gets him another sixteen feet.
That will get it, if you go the whole way, yeah.
All right, so he's gotta go another five feet beyond that.
Behind that edge to get to twenty-five feet, yeah, I got you.
All right.
All right, so I'll try to work that out.
The patio itself requires two foots that back off some.
I don't want you to be talking to your neighbor and end up being short for something, you still have to move your pool or something.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Well, yeah, Mary just brought up a good point, the patio itself requires a fifteen foot setback.
But it's one thing to have a patio, it's another thing to have a pool.
I mean, is this a, it is a concrete patio, so it's not like you can take up a four...
It is a concrete patio, and it's an inground pool, so it's, uh...
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Kenna, you have work to do, okay?
Let me work on that, and...
We'll see you at some point in the future, but you gotta get going with the other application first.
Okay, so basically, I gotta look at the real line and talk to the, talk to the planning board and get it, uh...
Correct.
See exactly what the...
We're gonna do a lot line realignment with the planning board, but they'll do it as a coordinated review, so that we cover all these variances at the same time.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
But again, you gotta, you gotta resolve all, you gotta resolve all the issues here. The rabbit cages, rabbit huts should be where they should be.
Gotcha.
The other, the boxing ring, the other things that are on there, just, all right?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We shall see you again. Item number eight, appeal three six three seven, Ross, Jeanette Ross, one fifty-one Milltown Road Homes is requesting a twenty-five foot sideline variance for a proposed ten foot by twelve foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi.
All right, yours is the first time we're seeing your application, your request here, so if you don't mind, if you could take us through this.
Sure. Basically, what I wanted to do was replace a shed that was existing on my property. As you can see, I have a non-conforming lot, it's a one acre lot in a three acre zone. This particular spot would shield, my neighbors would not see the shed from this, from this spot. This whole sideline from the back to the front is heavily landscaped with forsythia and lilac trees. The, the area, I guess to the west of the house, this, this large area over here, there's a lot of granite ledge, so that there is no place to put a shed there.
Okay, all right.
The only place where I could put a shed that wouldn't require a variance would be in the front here, which would be, you know, visible to all my neighbors from the road. The property that is adjacent to mine on the sideline and the rear line drops down precipitously, so that, and there is no, there's no house there, it's all woods. If anything were ever to be built there, it would be below the level and they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't see anything.
The survey that you submitted with your application, is this an actual survey?
It's a copy of, of the, of the survey.
But this isn't how a survey is usually done.
I was trying, I was trying to find my surveys, this was the only other thing I found, it's only been a digital log of our house.
Okay.
Which, he had requested a variance for the, which was going, I don't know if that is one of them.
Well, yeah, it's a little bit better than, this is clearly hand drawn, I don't think this was done by Mr. Barger.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he put his name on it.
Well, at that time, asking that question, did he? Because it's not, it's not, it's not looking like this, John.
No, no, I agree, but, but Mr. Barger, because he expedited it.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, yeah. All right, so...
But he wouldn't allow his name there with it.
So the question for us is, why are you proposing this shed where, where you've got it? And is there any, are there two sheds?
Uh, no, that's...
There's two sheds.
No, that, that other little thing is an outhouse.
But it's there?
Well, it's not there anymore, I tore it down.
You took that down?
Yes.
Okay, how about the one that's in the corner that looks like...
That's what, that's what's coming down and what I wanted to replace.
Okay, so you recognize that what was there was not necessarily all on your property, it appears?
No, it's all on my property.
It looks like the heavy line goes around it.
Yeah, it looks like it's...
Well...
No, it looks like the heavy line goes around.
But it's coming down.
It's, yeah.
It's coming down.
It's, what happened is, it was built sort of hanging over, yeah.
Oh, there's a little, okay, there's a lip there.
And, like I said, the property in the back falls off precipitously.
Got it, okay, I get that now. So, but again, why, why?
Because any other place where I could put it would be in the front part of my property, you know, visible to my neighbors and, and the road.
And so, isn't this in?
No, there's, like I said, there's all this vegetation along the sideline that you can't see it.
When was the house built?
When was the house built? Eighteen seventy.
Okay, that's right.
I think the old shed was built about the same year.
I understand, but if this is the rear line of the house...
Correct, correct. No, what I was wondering is that if...
It's in front of the rear line of the house.
I mean, you already have an existing footprint for a shed, which you're taking down. Can't you use that same footprint and grandfather it?
I, well, I had wanted to do that, the man who was going to put my shed in said that it kinda sloped down and, and water would run into, into the shed, you know, causing problems. You know, the old shed rotted out, I mean, it was just, it was like a chicken coop. So I was just trying to move it to a flat spot a few feet from, from the shed. When I had asked about it at the, you know, in the, at the building office, when I made the request, they said that you can't, that I couldn't just, you know, swap it out.
Yeah, because, again, if you...
I mean, I would be happy to do that and, and try and, and ameliorate the drainage issue, but, you know, I wasn't sure if I could...
Once it's grandfathered, you can kind of continue using it, but once you move out of that area to a new location, it's a new application.
Uh-huh.
And that's why I wondered to know when the house was built.
Yeah.
And if it was pre-zoning, then we have to work with whatever you have.
It's pre-twentieth century.
Is that something you want to consider? And then it just saves this whole application?
Well, that's what I had originally wanted to do, but I was told...
Right, but you're concerned it's gonna wash out at the bottom there, so...
Well, but I was also told that it didn't, I couldn't, that grandfathering wasn't appropriate, that I, it was a new shed and it had to have, you know, a permit and, and everything.
Mary, can you confirm that?
I have no idea who would've told her that. Pre-existing, non-conforming, you can put the exact same footprint.
Yeah.
You can't expand it in any way, shape, or form.
You can prove it's there, the same size.
Were you gonna put exactly the same size as what you had?
Within six inches, maybe?
That's it, that's the...
I, you know...
As long as it's the same size, it doesn't need any action by our board.
Uh-huh.
And you can just withdraw and avoid that.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't know how you would, you would check on that, I already tore down the old shed, so...
How, how long ago did you tear it down, though?
Couple weeks ago.
Well, John, you must have some evidence of what's there.
Oh, it's all still there in a big, a big pile.
Yeah, but the four corners can be ascertained? Can the four corners be ascertained?
Probably.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, the original footprint, I mean, nothing's wrong there yet or anything. You could measure that.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, come out to, you know, appropriate measurements and...
But does it go to the property line the way it appears?
No, because if you look at the other survey that she gave us, there's a, there's a jut out.
Oh, okay.
And so it's clear that that jut out went around that shed.
Sure, solid line.
She would just need a building permit then, 'cause it's over a hundred square feet.
So it's your, if you really wanna change the location, then proceed.
Well, I...
If you, if you, if you wanna put your shed in tomorrow, you can do it without changing the location.
I, I think I would, I mean...
Right, with a building permit, sorry, thank you.
I, I would like to put it where it's flat and where it's a better place for it.
Okay.
If you were to deny me, then I would, you know, I would try and put it in the old position.
Okay, if you like that, I mean, the property juts out just for that shed.
All right, so let's deal with, what do we really need to put it in this location? I mean, I, I recognize where, the way your property is, you really have no...
This, this, this big, this thing goes down into the woods, you know?
Yeah. Well, I'm less concerned about that side, 'cause that's not where the shed is, it's more the other side.
Yeah, no, I meant that, I wouldn't be able to put it there.
Well, you probably wouldn't be able to meet the setback requirements in, in there anyway.
No.
So...
No, like I said, the only place I could, I could meet setback is, is right in the front, front yard.
She wants to weigh it on the property.
Yeah, I, I guess that would be just one question, is really doesn't...
You can't come in five feet?
Can you, can you come in a couple...
Well, I could come in, I could come back, you know, uh...
Just in case you wanna store materials leaning against it, that you're not on your neighbor's property.
You go around, fix the shed or something.
Well, it's, it would be about five feet from, from the property line.
That's not what you drawn on your application, that's why we have to ask.
Oh, well, my drawing is...
You've literally drawn it to the property line.
Well, I, I guess what I did was I drew it, and then it was suggested to me that I have a five foot, at least a five foot, you know, leeway, so you could walk around it, so you could mow behind it. I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to move it forward, you know, five, ten, even ten feet.
So that's why, you, did you make, who made this change on here? Where she originally requested thirty feet, and it's now twenty-five?
Because the land was subdivided prior to eighty-five, so she then needs twenty-five.
Okay.
But it's not forward that you have to move it in, it's, it's in, towards the house.
Right.
Yeah, lateral, yep.
Yeah.
When you say forward, you mean the property.
So it, it's a sideline variance, not a rear yard.
I, I mean, towards me, if I was standing in front of it.
Right.
But it is still a rear line variance.
I understand.
It's still too close to the rear line, right?
Yeah, I, I realized that after I had submitted everything.
And it's in front of the rear line of the house.
Right.
Right.
So, just, that's what we're saying, to do this one location, it's gonna require multiple variances.
But if it's moved in five feet, is it still...
Yes, because the rear line was...
It would, it would probably be about twelve feet from, from the rear line and, and five feet from the sideline is really how it would be.
Okay, we're gonna need you to come into the office and amend your application, so you're telling us exactly where you want this.
Mm-hmm.
All right, again, I think we all recognize, or at least I recognize, the area around you is, you're not disturbing anybody with this location, especially if you had an existing shed there for, for a long period of time. So I don't necessarily see that as being an issue, but you have to, it has to be you telling us where it's, you're suggesting it be, as opposed to...
Can it still go to a public hearing at the minute?
We still have to go to a public hearing, but that's why we need...
But it's still, I, I'm not gonna miss out on that, is all that's...
No, 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 we're just, we're gonna define tonight what, what the setbacks really are gonna be, so that we're, we're just clear that this is advertised appropriately.
Right.
Sure.
All right, so you're saying twelve feet in from the back?
Mm-hmm.
Five feet in from the side?
Side, yeah.
And then within, so it's gonna be a twenty-foot sideline variance and a thirty-eight?
Twenty-foot sideline, what is it?
From the rear?
I thought it had to be a twenty-five foot sideline variance.
Thirty-eight, yeah, it's gotta be fifty feet, so it's twelve, so it's a thirty-eight...
It requires twenty-five feet.
Variance.
The setback is twenty-five feet, the variance is...
Oh, I thought it said thirty feet, I'm sorry.
Um, because your property was created prior to nineteen eighty-five, you only have to meet the twenty-five foot setback.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, the variance is the difference of what is required and what you're providing.
Okay.
And the requirement is twenty-five feet.
Okay.
So you're gonna be able to provide five feet?
Sure.
Okay, so this, you need the twenty...
Yeah, so it's a twenty-foot sideline variance, a thirty-eight foot rear line variance, but it's also a variance because it's in front of the rear line of the house.
Three things altogether.
But again, the outhouse, the, the other structure is gone, the other shed is gone, so there's no, nothing else on this property that we need to worry about clearing up while we're here.
Beehive.
Okay.
Do you have a better copy of the survey, because this is...
She has it, but it doesn't have the other outbuildings on it.
Yeah, it doesn't have it, so, I mean, my recommendation would be to get an updated survey if possible, that'll clean up a lot of issues.
Well, I think what we can do is ask Kurt to make a copy of this and...
I have a larger version of that, um...
This is pretty clear.
In the blue?
This, this shows the sixty-eight feet, and then here's you draw it on.
Um...
Is it a print of a survey as opposed to a copy that you have?
I, I don't know where the original survey is.
Does it have a rate seal on it, do you know?
I, I don't know, I have a lot of material when we went before the planning board, I guess it was, unless it was your board, when we put an addition onto our house.
It was probably this board if you got a variance.
Yeah, see, one of the reasons...
Yeah, and, and that, and we used that...
How long ago was that?
Paper, um, about seven years ago. Paper, um, about seven years ago.
Yeah, see, the problem is that I am looking at the survey dated September twenty-six, two thousand and three, and that does not show any outhouse or any shed. It just shows the floor plan, and that is why I wanted, you know-
Well, the outhouse is gone, the shed is gone.
Yeah, the shed is gone.
So the, the survey's actually good now.
This is two thousand and three. No, but she is-
She tore it down already, she drew it on hers, it's gone.
Pam's going to look in the, in the file for the, for the other application and see if we have a survey there.
She's torn down.
Alright, or at least a copy of this one. Because at this point, there are no other structures.
Uh, my name and my late husband's name, which is why I can't find anything.
It's still Ross?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you find your property corners, are they marked or staked somehow? How are you going to know you're five feet away from your property line?
Uh, there's a stone wall.
Does it show the stone wall in the survey?
Nope. How old is the stone wall?
How old is it?
Old. Probably as old as the house.
It's, it's an old stone wall.
It doesn't show it on the survey, that's-
That's how they use to delineate property lines.
Do you have the meets and bounds survey as well? That, that could tag along with that survey.
I, I don't know what that is.
It, it would say, um, starting at the stone wall and going, running for thirty feet, or whatever it is.
Oh, I don't think so.
That, that would reference the stone wall, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think so.
If the survey is wrong with the setbacks. In any event, you might look along, and you might have it marked some-
Alright, are you available to check with the planning, with Pam and the planning board office tomorrow? Just so that, or, or sometime in the next couple of days?
Thursday, I can come in.
Okay, as long as we can check in the next couple of days, so that we're advertising appropriately.
Do I, do I need to bring anything with me?
No, let me see what I can find.
Okay.
Alright, Pam, you want to call her in the next day or two?
That's just going to say the, the phone numbers that are on here.
Uh, yes, my work number is probably the best number. Um, uh, that's the two oh three number.
Mr. Ross, here's your other survey. Alright, so we-
Don't say.
We'll work to, we've now defined the variances that are needed. We're going, you're going to come in and amend your application, Pam's going to look and see what we have on file already.
Okay.
Alright, and then you'll also see Pam about your sign, because you need to do the advertising for your public hearing.
This is what?
Yes, there's a, there's a sign that has to go on your property. So do I have a motion to allow the advertising for a public hearing for August?
As amended.
As amended, correct, thank you.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you, we'll see you next month.
Amended.
Several times.
Yeah, exactly.
Five line, oh, six, one feet, rear line, thirty-eight feet, and-
Alright, item number nine. Appeal three six three eight, Miyoshi, Edwin and Patricia Miyoshi, the three nineteen Blue Hill Road, Hopewell Junction are requesting a ten-foot frontline variance and an expansion of a non-conforming use for a proposed Echo Cottage to be placed on their property, which is point six-two acre, in an R-one zone pursuant to local law number two of two thousand and thirteen. Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, so you are first-
So we hear.
Yes. The bleeding edge.
Aren't you lucky? Alright, so let's, as, all board members remember, earlier this year, the town board approved the potential use of Echo cottages, the elderly cottage housing option, or something like that. Thank you, that's, um, thank you. So the, so you guys have proposed to put it on your lot, now that we're starting with the fact that you have an undersized lot, or a non-conforming lot.
Correct.
Yes.
It is also a corner lot.
Yes.
Um, now, my understanding is there was a site visit today or within last?
Two sites visited.
Okay, by, or to the town engineer.
Town engineer, yes.
So the, the site may have changed from what we have here?
He had mentioned changing it, our concern with where he wants to put it is that it would be up close to our house, like, probably less than ten feet, and we were concerned, you know, in the event of a structure fire, you know, if one structure caught fire, the other structure wouldn't, you know, be very close.
Okay.
Um, we didn't know, um, I know Bob had mentioned when we originally looked at it, that the structures had to be something like twenty-eight feet apart, so that was a concern we had. And he had said he was going to look into that, was the law or not?
He said he was going to look in, look into that as far as the zone.
It is five feet.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how far, I mean, you know, he just wanted to put it, he was mentioning putting it closer to our house, so it looked like part of our house, but, you know, it's only a temporary thing, we're not buying it, we're leasing it, it's, you know, my mom, it's for my mom to move into.
Okay.
Um, you know, we have a flat area, but, you know, I know that's where the variances, the original variances we put in for have come into play.
And again, it's a rental cottage, so once you don't have a need for it, it'll be moved out.
It'll be removed, yes.
Yes, exactly, we needed for, for her mom, who was recently widowed, as well as a cancer survivor.
There are three letters in the, in the file already supporting it.
Yes, yeah, and, and, yeah, our neighbors, you know, already submitted letters that they had no issue with it if the board didn't.
Her doctor submitted one that she did, okay.
Okay, so, but, so, I'm, we need to understand, where is this going to go, alright?
I can show you pictures.
Because ultimately, we need to understand if there's variances that are required, well, yeah, if there's going to be variances required for where you're proposing to place it. Yeah, come on up.
This is where we want it, because it has to be on a pretty flat part of the property.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be right here, this is Blue Hill.
So here, look again, looking at your survey, you were proposing here.
We were proposing, well, I-
Which, which is the, which is the spot out here.
Okay.
And where the town engineer was proposing,
Was kind of butted into the house.
It's literally right along where the-
So this red area is where the town engineer is proposing?
Yes.
Much closer-
A little further out, you know, which is where the variance comes in.
What's the reasoning with the town engineer to bring it closer to your property?
Because he wanted to, he wanted it to look like an admission, like it was part of the house.
It's a very visible corner lot.
Yeah.
And what's the issue for you not to have it that close?
Well, we have to dig up, I mean, we have the retaining wall and all of our-
The, the, the biggest issue was the fire.
We cut off the fire, but then once we remove it, we have to replace all that.
Yeah, where is your septic?
The septic is around to the front of the house, it's on the corner, in, right near the corner of, of the Blue Hill and Shenandoah, right, right in that section.
And the well is-
The well is behind us.
Yeah, the septic is here, and the well is out here.
I mean, I can, I can understand-
I can show this one too.
The, I'll, I, I can speak to the fact that I'm concerned, if it's totally separated from your house, it's going to look really, really strange. Just because you have a very, very visible piece of property there.
This may help, where we were suggesting is starting it here and running it out towards here.
Right.
With the town-
So, but how far removed from the, from the driveway?
Um, the town engineer was suggesting that we rip up this flowerbed garden and put the front edge of it, which puts it about four feet from the top of the driveway.
Any other concerns expressed by the engineer, by, such as if there's an emergency and they need to come out? I mean, what, you have to do, I presume sidewalks and that kind of stuff over to this cottage? And you're going to have to do a lot of other stuff.
We're going to have to build some sort of path to put my mother-in-law to get there.
Before you just, before you, you're suggesting, you're suggesting that this, that this town engineer is saying four feet in from-
Right on the driveway.
Okay, four feet off of the driveway this way, I gather.
There's a retaining wall here, and there's some flower beds.
Right, I see.
Behind that, we have vegetable gardens.
Over the railroad tie.
Right, he was saying that he wanted the vegetable gardens ripped up and the cottage placed-
Where are you proposing it, in the same picture?
In the same picture, we were going to have the end of it from here going out this way, and this is actually this.
The corner wall here.
It's just more in the, in the-
Is this a drainage swell here?
No.
No, it's a natural contour, the, 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 the whole property is on a hill.
This is the hanging plant that's here.
Yeah.
This is where he wants us to put it in here, like over here, and we wanted to do it over here, like right here. So it, it, is she, I mean, do you need?
A ramp?
A ramp? No, she doesn't, but they are handicap accessible, but she doesn't invisible.
At this point, she's not needed, okay, you have wheelchair.
Okay, but again, you're going to have to, during winter time, you're going to have to maintain access to that.
It's all access.
You know?
Well, we do anyway, because the dog uses that area, so I have to keep that area cleaned anyways.
Not the word, what were you saying, but the patient?
I'm just saying, you know, we, we just keep having to understand.
Add an indoor bathroom.
How, how many were four? Okay.
This one's, okay.
There's one right down the corner of eighty-two, and over that road, that's where we're at.
Right, your model.
Okay.
Alright, questions or comments from board members?
And Scott gave us a way we'd get rock, but we actually expect to get some rock.
And that's, that's our concern too, we do know that there's a lot of rock underneath because our kitchen doesn't, like, our house is-
They had to stop the driveway here, so because there's a huge rock under there that we couldn't go soft.
Okay.
And then we may want to do some more, like here, or right, but these, this was a bigger picture issue.
So would you have to take down any of these trees, or?
Well, they're, we planned, they had them down anyway, we kind of picked them down. Because they're going to begin with your garden.
Yes, these trees are all coming in there.
Oh, okay, not, not the ones separating your neighbor.
Sounds like a branch, I don't know if I have them.
I have to get some parts laid out as well.
These two would come down anyway.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any concerns on-
I mean, as far as the rock, you're not really digging down, are you?
No, I've just got to level it up.
I mean, this is going to just stay flat anywhere, so you're not really anchoring it. I mean, you're anchoring it, but not, but not really digging.
It's not having footing.
Correct, yeah, you don't have footings, correct. Temporary structure.
Pam, any other concerns we should be aware of? Septic. How old is that septic?
Um, it exists since we bought the, um, the house.
Because this is, this is an older house, right?
Well, she's been living on this for, ever since her husband passed, so-
Okay.
The new ordinance requires you give us something from the county saying it's acceptable to the county.
Yeah, but not us, and he goes to the building for them. That's a step after.
They have to certify, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking to them, yeah.
Okay.
But that's required in the ordinance. Part of the septic thing to me is she's already living in the house, so no difference if she's, you know, living in the house or if we're living in the Echo Cottage, that the-
Yeah, that's, that's where it's all, that's where it's all present.
Okay, so are you proposing that you, that we follow what your original request was? Or are you agreeing to what the town engineer's request is?
That's what I would like, to follow our original request. I mean, it's going to be a big, you know, as well, so it's what he wants. I just think it would be easier to put it where there's nothing that makes an issue after the versus everything else we have to do.
And we, and if you go over there, we're not worried about side setback requirements?
My neighbors, um, are-
No.
We are.
Well, that's where the variance comes in, but both of my neighbors have, you know, their parents-
If we move it where, where we want it to place it,
Right.
It's too close to Delwardly's property. Uh, Delward has provided a letter saying he has no issues with concerns with that. Um, the neighbor across the street, the, his is Aladizki, also-
Right, right, my gosh, the letters are here.
On the other side, we have the industrial-
I think we're just concerned about the look of it as a freestanding structure, right, right.
It used to be, years ago, seven old misthams in seventy-four, and when you had a corner lot, you used to be able to choose your-
Yes, we, we've done that.
Now you have two, now you have two front yards.
Yeah, right.
So-
It's been changed then, so you still could choose between your front-
That's why we have the issue.
So you still got that ten foot, regardless of which way, where you place it.
Ten feet?
Well, we're going to be too, it's too close to the road in, in either spot here. The, the difference is too close to the neighbor or whatnot.
So you got one variance, you're going to vote for, you vote for the street.
Well, it's actually technically, we, we were going for three, one is because there's a lot of rock, and you have to think too close to the neighbor and too close to the road.
It's not how this is written.
The original application is three.
Right.
Uh, the, I, I, that write-up to me looks like it came from the engineer's recommendation.
A ten-foot front line.
If you put it where the engineer wants it, there's no variances required.
Because it's forty feet away from the road.
But there's still two, if we put-
No, this is not written up from the engineer, this is-
No, this, this was when the application first came in.
Right, so this is not Scott's recommendation, this is what you guys are requesting.
A ten-foot front line from the road.
Right, and there was a five, there was a five foot from the neighbor.
On the side, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, I knew I could mention it.
This is five-foot variance and a twenty-foot variance off the road. How do we go from twenty feet to ten?
Ten-foot variance, because they're forty feet in.
And you need fifty.
And they need a five-foot side yard, because they're proposing twenty.
You're going fifty down to forty. Mary, you're going fifty down to forty.
Right, so that's a ten-foot.
So that's how it's, that's where the ten-foot come, came in. There, you were requesting twenty, but it was changed to ten, because you need the fifty.
Twenty was a-
Right, so this does reflect, but it, it's not showing the side yard, no. Alright, what, let's have some discussion with the board here about what makes sense here and-
On our meeting wage.
Yeah, exactly.
Again, maybe I'm confused, if it goes where the engineer suggests a variance is needed, I mean, other than expanding on from the roof.
Where's the Scott picture?
Well, he still needs a variance on the one front line from the, from the road, but not the side.
If it goes behind the house, is it still too close to the road?
The house is way-
The house is right on the side of the house.
The house is right on.
Yeah, the way he's got it, it's actually closer.
So the, the only issue before us is whether or not we like it over on that spot or not, when we grant that variance.
It looks like he wrote in a fifteen here, so it might be a fifteen-foot variance instead of a ten.
No, I think that's five feet in between the house and the cottage.
Oh, okay, got it. If you turn it one way, it's five, yeah, if you turn it the other way, it's fifteen, okay? And I'm going the way the septic and pool are written, and that's why it's fifteen, so-
I understand that then.
Do you have any pictures that it's going to look like?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any pictures of the cottage?
Oh, um, I'm-
We got the brochure here.
I think I have the brochure.
I'm sure you do.
I don't, maybe if you have one.
I guess we're, we're to the point where we've got to go by, we've got to make a decision about locations, so that it's advertised properly.
Yeah.
Do we know when, Scott was out making, did the site visit?
I don't know.
Um, Monday late this week.
Monday late this week.
Maybe Wednesday, because we were here Thursday, Friday.
Tell us you're going, we had stepping, that's me. House for eighteen hundred? Are you on that, how's anything?
We need to walk in on the location. Well, then- Estery Mash, Estery Hall? Or as close as possible?
As close as possible to the color of the house.
If, if we go closer to where Scott's, is there a way to move it in five feet, so you don't need that side yard variance? You're not, you're not going exactly where Scott's suggesting it.
Okay, we could, we could do that.
Alright, but if, what if we move it over, then we're eliminating the side yard. The front yard, I mean, I, I still say we go with the ten feet, but you probably end up needing a little bit less than that, just because of the way the lot is.
Mm-hmm.
And it gets it a little bit closer, it, like, cuts into the area, it kind of meets him halfway, almost.
Right.
Not quite halfway, but-
We'll work it far as we can.
If we can, at least then it's just the front yard, and, now, do we have to deal with any of the existing house variances here? Because that's not on here.
Um, yeah, we should.
While we're here, do we clean this up?
We should, we might as well.
When was the house built?
Eighteen, huh?
Eighteen eighty?
Eighteen, okay, yeah, we need to do that.
But we have to know how far it is.
Okay, who has that information?
Nobody.
Nobody?
If they didn't have a survey, we wouldn't have it.
You haven't done a survey in recent years for refinancing?
I have.
We did a refinance about ten years ago.
Oh, you have a survey?
Well, it's two parts of a survey.
Let's see the survey. That's, yeah, survey says, thank you. April twentieth nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's showing that one corner of the house is sixteen point five-three feet on one side for one front yard. So that would be a sixteen, fifty minus sixteen is?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thank you. Is that Blue Hill or Shenandoah? Blue Hill.
Blue Hill, the side.
Alright, and the other side is?
The Shenandoah side is?
It's not labeled. Right, it's not.
Can it be scaled, or is it?
Copy drained.
Oh, you know what, it looks like there's something in the middle missing here.
Yeah.
Do you have an original?
It's not, it's going to say, it's going to say residence, not reside.
You copied it with a gap.
Because that fra means, says something else.
There's a gap in the copy.
There's a gap in your copy.
Didn't you, because he brought the survey with him, I know.
Yeah, but this, this does go back, right, your porch goes in.
So do you have a better print of that survey?
I just, there's no distance here for us to get that measurement. Your survey, the actual document, might have that measurement.
And you're looking to put this-
Here.
But we were looking for it out here, he wanted it-
He wants it cut into the planted area here. So if we just bring it in, instead of, instead of the original request, twenty feet in, make it twenty-five, it pushes it a little closer to where, where Scott was.
This is put together.
Oh, we have it, okay.
Well, it's still taped.
It's still taped, I didn't bring that one.
It maybe is, it's a better tape.
Yeah, it doesn't have the. Are these wooden stairs or are they?
That's concrete.
That's concrete, so we gotta go to the stairs, right Pam?
You can call Mr. Shaver and get a better copy.
Does anybody have a scale?
Five feet away.
Right, you want them?
Hold someone in the area.
Hold on, let me see if I have mine. Uh, no, I don't have any. Yeah. You should keep one in here, but it's not there.
See, who has the records of Mr. Shaver, do you know?
Huh?
We're trying to look at his survey.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do you think Mr. Shaver died?
Oh, did somebody purchase his business though?
As I'm saying, who, I said they handed the files to Oswald or?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, somebody, one of those, any of those local.
Anyway.
What I would suggest that you do is you call up the local architects and engineers who, uh, in the East Fishville, Fishville area and see if they.
Okay, Mark Day would know where the.
Yeah, Mark Day would know, correct.
Mark Day.
He was here earlier.
Or Mr. Oswald will know where the records are.
It looks like it might be the same sixteen.
Day and Oswald.
Yeah, um, Robert Oswald is, is a surveyor.
And he'll know.
All right, Mark Day is an engineer.
And he'll know.
Mark was here earlier with the landscaping business?
Right.
That was Mark, okay? Oh, yeah, Bob, Bob's the best person to talk to, he's an actual surveyor.
Do we have to clean up the pool? Whatever keeps asking.
If this is to scale, it's twenty-one inch, it's twenty feet, but.
Except the copy throws off.
Yeah.
Where's the twenty?
Twenty.
Copy throws off.
Yeah, it's, it's not because one inch, it's, it's not the.
The copy or the?
It's a copy, it's not.
It'll dilute.
Thank you Pam.
It dilutes the, uh.
Does anybody else agree that it appears that it's awfully close though to that sixteen point five-three to the stairs here?
I don't wanna guess.
I know, that's what I'm concerned about.
Mr. Novak, do you know who Mr. Shaver's records are with now?
In doing the advertising for the variance, this front yard, we, we don't have a measurement here, she, she Shaver. So I'm suggesting it appears to be somewhat similar to this.
He would, probably was as good as anybody else.
What kind of stairs are they?
Concrete.
I don't think, my experience with attached concrete stairs.
It's not really attached to the house, is it?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not.
There's a walkway.
That's a walkway, that's just.
Oh, so it goes to the house, that, that's better.
Yeah, that's just a sidewalk.
Okay, I thought this was like a deck or something, okay.
I don't think we have to.
This is an open porch is the deck.
But that's not, still not fifty feet.
No, it's not fifty feet.
That's not fifty feet. Twenty-eight, twenty-three feet.
So you, is that your professional opinion? I don't know, don't even answer that.
It is what it is.
All right, what do we do?
I think what you should do is ask if they can find a better print and survey, maybe do a sit-down during.
What's the urgency of your timing here?
As soon as possible. We've got a three-bedroom house, both of our children are going to school right now, and her, her mom has one of the kids.
We got a public hearing.
Yeah, we gotta do a public hearing still.
We can set the public hearing.
We, we can set a public hearing, but to set a public hearing, we have to notify the public of what the variance is. And that's what we need this measurement for, sorry, this measurement.
Yeah, well, it's called.
But that's for something different.
That's for something.
We're asking.
Well, we have to clean it up.
It's also kind of, the problem, the problem is why it goes on the road.
Nine more.
We don't wanna hold it up just for that number.
We understand, we're trying to get there, I'm trying to get at.
We get your number tomorrow, this is your.
Can, if, somebody can get ahold of, of Mr. Oswald and, and get a number, Pam, what's your, what's your date to? She's counting it up right now.
Does that have to be, does it have to be a real number?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll get your number right now.
Seventeen, seventeen, July seventeenth, you have until between now and July seventeenth.
It's happy number by July seventeen.
So.
Phone number.
No, not a phone number, a, a real number, folks. Um, all right, here.
If you advertise long.
All right. So do I have a motion to agree that advertise, allow this to get, allow, to loud advertise, assuming they get the correct distance?
No, no, we haven't decided on the location. That's why it's worth the location.
Well, they're gonna move it over the five feet.
Okay.
So that they, we eliminate the side yard variance. So that they, and then, but we need that distance from, for the other front line, the side that has the concrete stairs. They need a surveyor to give us that distance by July seventeen, so that it can be advertised.
The Shenandoah Road.
Yes, Shenandoah Road, thank you.
Clean up the, step back from there.
All right, motion?
Um, as amended.
Well, we're gonna move to advertise, enough of them to be prepared on time, so.
Right.
Motion to advertise for public hearings on August eighth, is that correct, right Dave?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, I'm sorry.
August thirteenth?
August thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
So moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
See Pam about your, um, noticing, please? Mr. and Mrs. Neos, Pam has to give you the instructions about your design and your noticing. Okay, item number ten.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. Appeal three six three nine, Catalano Family Realty. Carolyn Catalano of Catalano Family Realty is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use to replace an existing mobile home with a larger one, as well as a one-foot sideline and a two-foot sideline variance on either side of the mobile home on, at twenty-one Griffin Lane, Hopel Junction, pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one twenty-one and one ninety-four dash one seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, my understanding is that you're looking to replace an existing mobile home, that is approximately how old?
Before HUD approval. It's a twelve by sixty.
Okay.
And I'm happy to replace that footprint, but they don't make twelve by sixties anymore.
Okay.
So that's why I'm coming in for the variance, but the address is wrong on here.
Oh, okay.
It's nineteen Griffin.
Thank you. Now, with, the, one question is, um, what is the new size? Cause it still says twelve by sixty?
Fourteen by sixty-five. Right, I put in for the fourteen by sixty-five, and since I originally put in that fourteen by sixty-five, the sixty-fives are very hard to find also, and they're looking older.
Okay.
And so, and so I don't know if I can amend my application to do a fourteen by seventy, and then if I wind up with a fourteen by sixty-five, then I wouldn't have used that whole variance. It would, um, it would still be two bedrooms, there's two bedrooms now. Um, I've had the septic tested, it's good. Um, I don't know if you guys know Griffin Lane, um, it's a dirt road and, um, it's the second to last house.
Okay.
And so only one other people see that, um, which is also part of the, um, the Catalanos also own twenty-one Griffin Lane and Catala Fan, Catalano Family Realty own nineteen Griffin Lane, so obviously it's fine with both parties.
Okay, so the existing square footage, the twelve by sixty is seven hundred and twenty square feet. You're, you, with, to go to fourteen by sixty-five is now nine hundred and ten square feet. So that's an addition of almost two hundred square feet.
There's also a, um, a additional existing footprint on there that should show on that. Oh, you know, I don't think that shows on that survey. It shows in the, um, in the town records, there is a, um, a addition on that.
Okay.
That was approximately twenty by twelve, that has fallen down.
That has what?
It's fallen down, yeah.
That shed?
And so I'm not replacing the addition on there.
The addition, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
There's, there's also a shed there that is clearly over my survey line.
Right.
And that, I'll just be taking that out totally.
Okay, sooner than later. Okay.
Yeah, like I just got the survey, like, I missed the cutoff last month.
But if you get the fourteen by seventy, you're gonna need greater variances on either end. For some reason why it can't be turned to fit in the length of the lot?
Right, correct. At the top where it is, it's, it's the only flat piece of the property. And so like behind it, it goes, I'm, I'm guessing here, it goes like seven feet, and then it's like a cliff that goes like straight up.
Wow.
And then like, um, maybe like four feet in front of it, there's like a little teeny tiny like patio area that's not really anything, it's not concrete and, I don't know, it's just kinda like stones put, put together. And then, and then the land goes like down, it goes down like fairly steep.
So it's fourteen feet wide, you're saying you got about twenty-two feet of flat area?
Yeah, yeah, I think that they went in and just leveled for, for that, for that home, yeah. And then, so like on the one side is the, um, is twenty-one Griffin Lane, which is Catalanos, and then on the other side, um, it's a one-acre wooded lot.
Do you have any documentation from any company about the fact that this size is just not available anymore? Can we just document the file related to that?
I'm happy to, yep.
Okay, if you don't mind if we could do that. I mean, I understand the dilemma that the fourteen by sixty-fives are, are difficult to come by. Um, it sounds, it looks like, again, with the steep slope behind you, and it looks like there's a property bump, that is the lot that is behind you, has an extensive rear yard as well. Um, the lot next to you seems pretty well cleared though, that's.
Which one, nineteen or the other, uh, twenty-one or the other side?
It's, it's, it looks like it's the one, kinda at the end it appears to be.
Do you want me to come up and look?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, this is, this is empty, this is just a wooden lot.
This is, this is twenty-one, this is, this is nineteen, this is empty.
This, this is you.
This is nineteen.
This is where I was saying behind you, they have an extensive backyard.
We don't even see them.
Yeah, especially if this goes up.
Here is like a total, it's like a total cliff.
This is, this is really cleared here, but you know, still, it looks like there's enough vegetation in the middle there that they might not see this, I, I don't know.
This is the location for the, for the.
This. Oh, it's over here?
Yeah, it's right there.
I own, I, I wanna be, um, be clear and honest with what, I own this property.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we don't even see this.
Which one do you own?
Because, um, I own twenty-one.
Okay.
Where is, where is this mobile home now?
I think that that's it.
Six eight three seven twenty.
I thought it was in the front.
No, see the structure here, you can actually see?
This is the road here.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is the, um, that's the shed that they're saying.
Right, you can't necessarily go by these lines here, so. Okay.
Okay, this is.
So it's this way.
Okay, this way.
Like, like this is, um, this is a garage here.
Okay.
And, and so like we can't even see here from our, um, from our.
Yeah, it looks like there's even rock in the middle there. Looks like there's quite a bit of vegetation.
This is, um, it's very wooded, it's very, um, it's very steep.
Okay.
Yeah, and then like here, there's actually like a huge hill, so like you don't, you don't even.
Are you guys understanding? Is this our discussion, Jim?
There's, there's some physical constraints, huh?
This is Griffin Lane, this is the driveway, and then this is paved, um, it was kinda like a parking area. Um, it's, it's all overgrown, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right?
All right, so yeah, if you provide the documentation about the one size not being available, are we okay going to the seventy-foot? But that, the seventy-foot now is gonna, how's that gonna fit on the line?
I would just extend it on, on both sides, I would probably extend it more on, away from twenty-one, cause I think that it was closer.
Carolyn, come back up here again. On your survey, and again, we're gonna want you to come to the office to make this correction.
In fact, we should probably add.
This is where you're adding in the extra square footage on this side.
I would. Right, and so like I, I would go probably like two feet this way, and then maybe like three feet, three feet that way.
May I suggest when we advertise, we'll say, I don't know, maybe three-foot sideline variance on the, whatever side of the property that is, and a five-foot sideline variance on the north side and south side, so we know, the neighbors know.
Well, it's a one-foot and a two-foot sideline, right? So we just make it a?
Yeah.
Three-foot and a five-foot.
That's what I said, but do we wanna define the sides?
Do you need it defined which, which sideline?
No.
Well, how do we know then in the future whether?
If you look at the survey, it'll show.
Relying on the building department.
But we can't say east and west side or something like that?
Then if you want.
Are they east and west or they were the south? Here, north, so it is east and west, you're right.
So we say three feet on the, who knows the calendar? On the west side and five feet on the east side, correct?
Yes.
Well, again, you have to ask the applicant for that way.
That's what we're asking for, define.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna come and make sure that you understand?
Yeah, oh.
Are you wording it?
Yeah.
Um, I wrote down that, west and east.
Okay.
Yes, it's based on your north arrow here.
North arrow here, this is east, this is west, and this would be the east sideline, this would be the west sideline.
So a three-foot west and a five-foot east?
Hmm?
Three-foot east, five-foot west.
Oh, I, I already have.
I just wanna make sure.
Two, three-foot east, this is east, west.
Yeah, that's west.
So three-foot w- east, five-foot west.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, that's true. All right, motion advertise? We all ready?
Yes, I'm all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. See Pam for your instructions, and then we'll see you next month, Jim. What?
A three-foot west.
Three-foot east.
East is over here.
Right?
It's gonna, it's done around.
Double check with the applicant, make sure. I don't care, just as long as we know in the end.
Right. All right, item number eleven, appeal three six four zero Stelter. Sean Stelter, nineteenth Canterbury Court, Hopel Junction is requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance for proposed in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is the first time we're seeing your application as well. Um, can you explain why this specific location?
So on the, the left side of the lot, in the rear, um, we have a very large sinkhole and several very large trees.
Okay.
Um, in the center of the lot, extending to the right side of the deck is the septic, and the only feasible place for the pool would be on the, the right side of the lot.
Okay. Can it come any closer to the house?
Um, it's gonna probably come within a few feet of the, um, the steps coming down from the deck.
Then, come on up here, because what I'm seeing is this is more than a few steps. Here's the wood steps.
Yep.
Here's the pool, that's more than a few steps. It's more than the width of your driveway as well.
So that, that isn't a good representation of the, of the deck on the house.
This is the survey, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not accurate. The, the, the deck, the deck comes out to.
Did you draw this on?
No, I did not.
Was the deck changed from that shape?
No. It was, yeah, it was put on that way from the, from the old house.
So how far out do the stairs extend?
And this isn't a good representation of the size of the pool either, I mean, the, the dimensions here are fairly accurate. Or, they are accurate, but the, the deck, actually, the steps come out right about here.
This is up to.
And the, this hallway pool comes down to about.
So it's not really here, it's really over here.
Pretty close, yes.
What is this structure here?
It's a shed.
Set eastwards.
And how close is that to your side yard? If we're down, northwards. Do you have a variance for that?
Yes, we have a variance for that.
Mary, they have a variance for the shed in the back?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may.
Yep. Yep.
The deck probably comes right about here, and it does not go out here, it stops here. So it's just shifted, they just shifted it on the, on the map. Steps come down here.
You guys need to see this?
Yes.
The deck is not really where it says it is?
Yeah, it wasn't-
The pool is not going to be where it says it is.
The deck was, we built the house with the size of the deck. And the deck, this actual size-
Where's the sinkhole?
Fairly representative of the deck size, it's just shifted over.
Right, Jim is asking, where is the sinkhole?
So the sinkhole, so we have, so this is the tree line here. And it's actually, again, this is not the scale, this, I can't represent the pool as a scale. But the sinkhole is, starts over here, and-
You're calling that a sinkhole? Or just a depression that goes down? A sinkhole is something that's sunk down?
It keeps sinking.
Did they bury debris in the-
I don't know, I haven't dug-
Tree stumps, tree stuffs.
As big as this is, they dug the whole, they put the whole neighborhood's debris in this hole.
That's not the big one, the big one is, the big one is back here where you can drive a truck.
Oh my gosh, okay. So where's your septic?
I'm not sure, let my kids go around.
So, well, you should see the light out by the well that I had filled.
Okay, septic, please.
And he dug down, was there tree trunks or anything in there, have you seen any?
No, I called up the company that dug the well, and they said, we've seen that before, and we've launched rigs in the hole like that before when we dug wells. There must have been an air pocket down there that worked its way out. And I had to fill it with about five or six milliliters full of sand to fill that up.
Because my neighbor had a problem, but, I mean, we dug down and there were tree trunks, it's done. We ripped them all out and filled it with dirt, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this one-
It's dangerous, he's on his lawn, and yeah, his leg goes down to his hip, you know?
I would be curious to see what's down here. This one I don't care about, because behind the tree line, there's actually another one right over here, a smaller one. But this one-
That sounds like they're natural, something's going on.
Alright, where's your septic?
Septic comes right out from the deck.
Okay, so you, you do have very limited ability to be able to move that over any close. It looks like you're putting it close to your fields anyway. Okay, that helps us understand better. Oh, okay, there you go, okay, good. Clean out from your fields and so now-
They put in contracts now.
The pool's gonna be right over here? Okay, so that looks like it's the best place to worry.
They wouldn't even-
Have you spoken with your neighbor, since it's that close? I mean, that's-
Motion good, or-
That's on record. Jim, you have any issue?
I'm just curious as to why the survey we have is nothing's to scale. I wonder if you could clear that up for us? How old is this survey?
Well, the only thing that-
Who did it?
Any can have-
Les would do a survey.
Day Oswald and Les maybe means, probably.
It was all-
When they had Day Oswald's survey, one day.
Oh, got it, okay.
I mean, the only thing that isn't, isn't accurate is the position of the deck on here. You know, I think the-
Was this the proposed for this, build out for this lot?
Maybe.
That's, I bet that's what it is. This was the plot plan, but not necessarily what was built.
No, that's, this, no, this is actually what was built-
Really?
Because the other house in the neighborhood are not this unique.
Well, no, it could be, they put the plot on, the design of the house could be there without actually it's built. Because if it's as built, the surveyor should have gotten the deck right.
Right.
I can't tell you why they, they-
It looks, it looks like it was really just-
Because the way it is now, looking at the survey-
There's no driveway on here, there's no-
Yeah, driveway's right here.
This is the driveway?
Yes.
So your well is literally right next to your driveway?
I was thrilled about that, too.
Wow. Caravel Road's all.
The, because the way it looks now, you have room to pull your pool over.
Yeah.
It's not showing the septic.
We've never granted a variance for a pool before, this sideline, and we, you really need to justify it. So we really need to know that you can't move it over anywhere.
What, along those lines, what is the size of the pool, and perhaps, does the size of the pool have to strike?
It's approximately thirty-nine by forty-four.
Okay, is it a custom pool, or is it a standard?
It's a free-form, pre-designed pool.
And so, this, this way is the thirty-nine, or the forty-four? Because if that's the case, why can't it be twenty-nine or thirty-four?
This was, the way it was, I said, it's a pre-designed pool.
And what I'm getting at is, along the lines of what Jim's saying is, could it be shifted just slightly so that, you work the curve around the septic fields?
So, this, the intent-
Oh, that's huge.
The intent was for-
That's a big property.
The intent was for this to be parallel to the property line, and so this extends out
But it's not.
To the side.
I mean, you're also going to want decking, or some kind of-
Well, yeah, what are you gonna do around it? You're gonna have a patio around it?
There'll be a patio either on this side or this side, fencing and maybe a four-foot walkway on this side.
But then again, that's a patio, a four-foot walkway. You get into the fact that, if you already had a fifteen-foot sideline variance, then you're gonna need another, a bigger variance for the patio.
My understanding was, we needed the variance for the edge of the pool, not the patio.
No, also for a patio.
Patio requires a fifteen-foot setback.
A walkway, in my opinion, is a patio.
If you don't tell me, you're putting a patio, they won't know.
Well, we, I, I mean, that's, that's certainly optional, I don't know if we're gonna do that or not.
We can't do it afterwards if we don't, if you don't have the variance in place.
If you can get it to twenty-five, it really is important. I mean, I, you're gonna, I think you're gonna have to get a survey which shows these sinkholes and see if you can define what they are and stuff. I mean, it's a relatively new law, they decided that pools need a twenty-five foot setback. We've been very reluctant since it's so new or anything to give them.
My suggestion would be to have a survey done, put everything on the paper, so everybody knows exactly what's going on right now. There's too many variations.
I approached Mr. Oswald about seeing what it would take to get an update to your survey. It shouldn't be that much, because he has the base data already, alright?
So I, I did get the sidelines staked out, and I didn't think Oswald did that anymore. I thought that was Gillespie that did that. He came, he came out and staked the-
Mr. Gillespie's an engineer, he's not a surveyor.
But again, he has somebody in the office who does the survey.
But he was, he staked it based on the survey that had been done by Mr. Oswald.
Right.
He can stake in fifteen feet in, that's not the issue. But you also have a patio, you also, you're-
Mr. Gillespie's out here in reference to this pool? Is that what you're saying?
I had him, I had him stake out the property.
In reference to having this pool put in? Is that what I'm asking?
No, I had him do that for another project.
Yeah, he could stake, I could stake it.
Well, again-
But he's not drawing you your survey.
Well, as an engineer, I don't know if you can give an idea of what's going on with the property and stuff, in terms of the-
I mean, the real problem is-
If he was involved with the pool, Mr. Gillespie comes and says, yeah, there's a sinkhole here, it's a real problem, would add some credence to the fact that something was done on your property.
He's saying that Mr. Gillespie was there to stake it for some other purpose.
I understand that.
As an engineer, he can stake it, that's-
I understand that.
But-
I mean, it's pretty obvious, there's a huge sinkhole here and depression on the ground, and, you know, the septic being where it is, the only feasible place is on the-
And we're taking your, we're for it that that's where the septic is, okay? And we, yeah, we know, we see that. But, but it's not showing the true dimensions of, the deck isn't right, the stairs aren't right, and the pool isn't right.
This is the county, this is the county showing the septic plan.
That's the county plan.
So where's the pool and the deck on that plan?
I'm saying-
That's our issue.
You know.
Given the reluctance to grant variance for pools on the sideline, I wonder if it behooves us, if we're considering granting this based on what's being represented, that we have a very definitive survey in front of us. And I would like to see on that survey where the sinkhole is.
Is there any vegetation here? What is the screening here, what's long here?
There are trees on this property line here. Start of the tree line here, where there's, there are wood chips back here, trees.
Okay, where are you gonna put your fence?
The fence would go right around the deck.
Okay. You gotta, you gotta show us more definitively the pool on here and the patio, what you're gonna do. Because I can't imagine you're putting landscaping right to the edge of that pool on this side. So, we have to understand better what you're really doing on here. Alright?
The surveyors are still around, so they-
Yeah, the information-
That's easy for them to-
It shouldn't be much to do an update.
Well, they have their field notes and-
I, when the, when the place was built, they didn't have any, there weren't any sinkholes there. So they, they have, they would have to come out and take a look at that and-
Well, I'm not sure we want him going in back into the tree line.
No, 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 just the sideline, where the problem is.
Where the deck is. With, in relation to the deck, in relation to where the pool is gonna be proposed to, and where this patio is.
But I'd like to see, you can't go that close to the tree line behind the septic also. To go back behind the, I'm not sure, if the septic is right here, you could go back-
Could you go over here, for example?
The septic comes, the septic comes straight out, straight out here, and it angles out this way.
So she's saying why you can't go there. Septic, it's a leach field here, we can't, the pool go there.
There's no room.
Well, that's what we need for the survey, that's what we're asking you to do.
And again, we need to see the hardship that you're proposing, why it has to be a certain place, and then we have to work with that. Right now, we do not know the dimension of the pool, and we don't know exactly where it is being placed. We have all these issues.
And the patio is-
Correct, and-
Patio, the where the septic field actually is. I mean, pictures could verify that there's a sinkhole on the other side, so you don't need, really need that on the service. We need to justify, we can go out and look at the property and go see that for ourselves. But we need, we need to have a survey which puts all the dimensions in front of us, which proves the hardship that you have no place to put that pool.
Part of that is, what's the size of the pool?
Yes.
And again, do you have the ability, based on the fact that it doesn't fit within the setbacks, to reduce the size of the pool?
It's sixteen hundred square foot pool.
Unless you can show that it fits where it belongs, but I think you've got a little bit more work to do here, before we're really ready to see this again.
And your survey will still be well down the road, too, when you make your other applications.
Alright, so we'll leave it on for review, if you can have material in and ready for us to review again next month. Alright, I just don't think, it's not ready for a public hearing yet. We just don't have enough information, that that's your only location.
So this, so, we can't, if I get that information for next month, we can't have a review next month?
Because we don't know how to advertise.
If you get the information for next month, we can have a review next month, and then have a public hearing in September.
So then that means I won't be able to start the project this year?
Maybe they can put a pool in in October? Seriously? My, my pool was put in in late September. They do, they do, that, that's not an issue.
No, they're not as busy.
Again, we have so many issues, it's just-
Well, I'm sure it's an issue with the contractor that we have, that he planned on, planned on giving the approval in August, and starting the third week, a week after it was approved in August.
Okay, but then you gotta reduce the size of the pool and eliminate the variance. You're not showing us the, you're not showing us the patio, you're not showing us that this is your only option. Your other chance is to take an, take the, take the chance that this, it might get denied altogether.
Well, if, I mean, if possible, I mean, I can get you the, I can get you the paperwork, and, but we need to get the project started in August.
I don't have enough information to go to the public hearing, but I'm one, I'm one vote, so.
Yeah, well, we don't have the information, so, the flip side of that coin is, we do set the public hearing, you don't come in with the information, we say you don't have the information, you're stuck. Again, you're not gonna get done in August.
But he's not-
You just coming in and saying, this is the way it is.
This is the way I want it.
Yeah, and this is the way I want it, is not sufficient.
Right.
So, yeah, we do set the public hearing, but if you don't come in with a survey which shows everything plainly to us as to why you need a pool that size in that location, it's not gonna be granted.
And again, we have to advertise accordingly, so that this is what your pool looks like, and so everybody in your neighborhood knows, including us, what, what you're asking for. Right now, we don't know what you're asking for. And that, and that's what we're talking about advertising. So if you advertise it incorrectly and you come back with different information next month-
You'll lose a month anyway.
You'll lose a month anyway.
Thank you.
And the flip side is, if, if nobody has an issue with it, and you are okay with the information after a while, I gain it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but we have a concern about the size of the pool and why you need the variance.
I mean, you're putting, I'm sure it's a wonderful pool, it's a grand pool. You've got identified real issues, so you have our attention, but we need proof. We have never granted a variance, to my recollection, in whatever years I've been sitting on this board, six, seven years, whatever it is, to somebody for a pool variance. We're very strict about it.
I think we granted one, Raspberry Ridge, remember? We did do one, but remember there was that, because there was the topography and the rest of his lot.
Right.
We did grant ones, probably about two years ago.
Okay.
So, but it took a lot.
Maybe I was not here that day.
It took rainbow pools coming in here, remember, and it took, it took a site visit, all the rest of it, to get it done. So, sorry, that's where we're at, okay? We need more information.
So, review.
We'll see you again in August, for review. Okay? Item number twelve, appeal three six four one, I don't wanna say this wrong, Bernier?
Bernay, Mark.
What?
Shutey.
Shutey, okay, I tried.
That's fine.
Mark Bernier and Julia Shutey, four ninety-nine, Hawthorne Road, Stormville, are requesting a twenty-foot front line variance for a ten-foot by twelve-foot shed, as well as a variance for a shed to be located in front of the rear line or their dwelling, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance.
That's okay.
You need to hang it up.
No, that's okay, that's okay, let's see what you have here.
You can put it on the clip if you-
Alright, so you're looking to put in a shed? Oh, this, oh, this is the application that was wonderfully built out, wow.
She looked like she's ready. Are you a school teacher or something? Let's go over there. Are you a school teacher or something?
We're all, we're transposed. But, I just have a question, I can't figure out your clip, but for the twenty-foot variance, is that because it needs to be fifty feet from the road?
So, third reading, Watson's survey.
So, I'm not managing your clip.
Let me just, let's look at it quickly, so we have an idea what you're gonna say.
So, for the twenty-foot variance issue-
Because you got your front line here.
Jim, this is Bernie, this is a Beatty Watson survey from what year?
Two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. Thank you.
See, this is a detailed survey, big tree.
There's a big tree and a big rock, not a survey, so.
Is this one?
This is, it's a very rural area.
It is, yes.
There's a big farm next to it, and, you know, in terms of having it fit into the neighborhood, you know, it's-
Well, is, is anybody gonna be disturbed by it, is really the question.
No, and the reason we have to put it closer to the road is because there's big rocks and trees in this area here. So it's physically really in the area.
Yeah, I, I see here.
Between the house, anything here, she had asked me.
Because I'm trying to see, I can't even see your driveway on here. This is your lot.
This is our lot right here.
And so where's your driveway?
It comes in this shadowy area here. I may have a bigger, oh, I left that home, we have other, we have just in color. So, and back here, there's, it's just really, if we ever wanted to put a deck back there, we just would not have room behind the house to do it. And we want it, easy access to have the garden tool, the snow blower.
How long have you been on this property already?
Um, we closed in February.
Oh, so you've just moved in, okay. We've had people that have said, well, if I ever wanna do a deck or a pool in the back, and they've lived there for fifteen years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, the fact that you've only lived there for a couple months is, you have more of a solid case.
You wanna put over here with the old privy?
No, no, we're not even sure.
So you, you're gonna have a snow blower, so you want-
So we have access to the garage right when you come in, because it gets a lot of, a lot of snow.
Oh, you have a garage, oh, you got a garage right there.
Yeah.
What about right next to the garage, like?
There's this rock here, there's really, to fit it in there, and there's a stone wall. Actually, it would be, I mean, just the layout of the farm next door is actually more symmetrical to what we're proposing in fitting it all in with the landscape.
So is the garage?
It's probably as long as a house.
Is the garage, does that need a variance, too?
Probably.
Well, it predated, but if you wanna clean it up, I suppose you could. Yeah, doesn't this-
Yeah, because the garage is in front of the-
It's only ten feet away, ten point six.
The house is probably-
Actually, seven point six.
Seven point six, right. This one corner, seven point six feet.
When was the house built?
In the thirties.
Okay.
Why, why can't you put the shed on the other side of this garage?
There's, I mean, there's this rock here, there's a stone wall, and the pathway between here is, you know, you can barely put the lawnmower and whatnot here.
Can you put it on this, well, I guess that's the driveway, that's the driveway, never mind, never mind.
The thing, too, with this spot is that, there's a, it's really heavily wooded, and this is a natural clearing, so we won't have to take out any trees. And it's well, I mean, if you're driving by, you won't be able to see it.
So the thirty feet here is really full vegetation there?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Those, the pictures-
And how about elevation, is it flat, or is this?
In that particular, it's flat.
Okay.
You got pictures for it?
Yeah.
I knew you had to have pictures.
Yeah. We gave you all pictures, too.
That's a penicillin.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The farms, you come in, and we're gonna be doing a similar, and this is looking from our property towards the, this is that garage, and then behind these trees is where we're proposing to put the shed. And, like, right, right back in here, I don't know, do you want me to pass them down?
Can you guys see them?
Let me just look at them quickly.
Yeah. Um-
Give me that, let me see more. There's two over there, too.
A full application, a full application, a new survey and photos.
Yeah, because I thought I recognized this, so now I know that.
You know where that is?
That's what I used to-
So, yeah, this is probably-
Yes, yeah.
This is where the shed would be, and there's even one in here where we stick, we-
It's in the area that's already cleared now?
So, right here, this is the one.
Oh, okay.
So-
So that tree's not coming down?
That tree's not coming down, the road is right here.
What color is the shed gonna be?
It's gonna, everything's gonna be red, black trim.
So, where's your house in relation to the farm, I'm not going.
So where's your house, your relation to the farm, I'm not going.
Um, the farm, the farm is behind us and it's down here.
Here is the, here's the farm, and here's her lot.
And here's the.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what it's gonna look like?
Floating in the air. Like it's floating in the air.
Yeah, so we'll have the same, we want it to be integrated with the lawns of the area.
I think, I don't have a real problem with that, I mean, you keep the trees there, maybe we can do the same thing, plant some bushes in case the tree falls down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I provided half of the bottom.
Motion to advertise?
So.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign and stuff, and we'll see you next month.
I'm sure you'll follow the intro.
I'd do that, Mike.
All right, item number thirteen, appeal three, six, four, two, the Goddard School. I don't wanna say this wrong, no nanny?
No nanny.
No nanny, thank you. Inc. representing the Goddard School, fifty Van White Lane, Wavengers Falls, is requesting a seven-foot sideline, seven square foot variance for a proposed seven point seven five square foot addition to the already existing seventeen square foot sign pursuant to section one fifty-four of the zoning ordinance. All right, I guess my first question for you is.
Why?
Did you not have a clear discussion about how much square footage you were allowed for signs?
The, I think the original, well, the Goddard's brand logo changed, so I don't know if that had something to do with.
I have no idea, I'm just asking.
Yes, so the brand logo changed.
You first had your discussion about signs.
It was included, this was included.
Okay.
But then, when the building sign went up, I think it was bigger than what they expected. So they took away the changing.
Channel letter, channel letter.
From the monument sign.
Okay.
So then we had to ask for the variance for the.
Channel letter.
What's, what's the new logo and what's the old logo? Did you bring that stuff?
It was, it's a horse, they just changed it, they made it look more modern, modern.
So still a horse?
But did it still require that the sign had to be a certain size?
The spacing changed.
Okay.
As far as the logo goes, so it became larger.
Okay.
And to make it fit adequate and look right with the new logo, the square footage changed.
Do you have a rendering of the new sign with the logo? Does it even have a horse on it? I thought it just said the Goddard.
The one on the building does.
It does?
This doesn't have though.
The one on the sign.
Is this the, is this the?
So what are you giving us versus what's on the building?
So that's the purpose.
We're not putting anything on the building.
We're not putting anything on the building, we're just asking to add the changing boards, we can market our events and things like that. So this is what's there, all we want is the change.
This is, okay, so you're talking about a sign that you're gonna be changing the copy on, you're changing the words there? But again, this is new construction. Did you not have a clear understanding ahead of time what the square footage of signage that you were allowed?
Well, we're leasing buildings, the landlord, when you buy them, we don't know anything.
I had a, I had a meeting with him and I explicitly told him the amount of square footage that they're allowed, and that he had to be very careful about what he put on the building, because that would take away from the freestanding sign.
Right, that's, it's a new construction, if it was, in some cases, we've had new construction buildings where the code has changed, they added some of the.
Our frustration with the landlord, I think.
And he doesn't always tell us this, so, he's just already said to us that this, that building sign, the footage has changed, and so we couldn't add the changing board, changing board's important to us, we have events, we'd like to advertise.
So the advertising on here is for the parents and the kids going to the school?
No, and for public.
Like if you have a graduation date.
Yeah, graduation.
Yeah, but the public's not.
I know, it's something, it's something, it's something.
Open house.
Open houses, we do a lot of community events.
You're allowed six temporary signs a year.
I know, that's, what is the square footage of this changeable copy area?
I think it's seven, yeah, seven three quarters.
That's, that's the square, that's what you're asking the variance for?
Well, they need seven, they could have three quarters of foot action, they could work. They need a seven-foot variance.
Right.
Other than.
I'm not seeing.
I'm having some difficulty up here, it says up here that they're entitled to eighty square foot, the.
Total forbidden.
Billing is sixteen, sixty-one eighty-three, and they are.
This is freestanding.
Correct, and seventeen square foot for a total of seventy-eight eighty-three of total squares, so is it going beyond eighty square feet now?
With this variance, it would be.
To what?
To eighty-seven point.
Yeah, they need seven-foot variance.
Okay, so basically, it's just very small, I mean, it's like less than ten percent variance.
Get us from that.
Yes, okay.
The problem is, again, I think the chairperson keeps saying is, this is brand new.
Right, it's new construction. The code didn't change.
The code didn't change, the proof of the sign.
Not that you knew, but the landlord knew upfront what the limitations on the signage was. I don't think this is a.
It's not like they're a brand new tenant coming in and they say, gee, this is what we need to do.
Again, it's a business, I wanna encourage the growth of your business, I'm not looking to, you know, to hurt, harm your business by any means, but I just have a problem with new construction.
Ten percent, you know, variance, I mean, it's such a, again, again, the applicant is not at fault, I mean, there is a fault somewhere in this whole chain, but why should we have a business where the applicant suffer because of misunderstanding, miscommunication, whatever?
You make a very valid point, I appreciate that, cause again, I don't wanna harm a business, okay? So as long as we're all in agreement with that, then it's fine, but.
It's a small, you know, variance, it's not like they're asking fifty percent or something.
Any concern we're not thinking of there here?
The only thing I'm thinking of is the changeable letters, you don't have a lot of those types of signs in town and.
How is the sign gonna be lit?
It's not lit right now.
Are there lights shining up on it, so, so in the winter, the neighborhood isn't gonna be able to see it anyway unless it's daylight?
There's only one house next to us, and in front of us is commercial.
I know Van White Lane well, so that's why I'm, I don't know what public.
Well, people will drive up and down all the time.
I mean, for example, at Catham High School, they have similar changeable copy.
That's different.
That's a difference.
But again, it is.
There's some churches on three seventy-six. There's churches on three seventy-six that have interchangeable letters.
Okay, so it's a concept that we know of.
It's totally up to you guys, right?
Pardon?
Totally up to you guys.
There are some places.
But again, businesses don't have it, I believe.
But not daycares.
Pardon?
But not daycares, right.
Maybe take some of the, what's in black right now, out, whatever, I mean, if somebody Googles Goddard School, you're gonna come up with GoddardSchool.com. Maybe, I don't know. I'm sort of stuck between the two points. Anybody that.
You know, especially with like the rail trail, if we had a way to market our events on our open houses, you know, when people are walking by, driving by, I think it would, it would help us.
How important is putting your phone number in the GoddardSchool.com out front on the sign? It's not like your website's completely different, it's the exact same thing as your name. Goddard School, anybody who puts Goddard School into a web browser is gonna come up with GoddardSchool.com.
But that's.
Also, you're saying remove that part?
Remove that part, make it end, so now you, you know, you're getting closer to what was originally.
Right, it leaves you the let, the changeable letters, but it reduces your sign.
It says GoddardSchool.com when there's no event and changeable letters.
Yeah, you could do that too.
And, yeah, and again, what about the two things that you have on the top, you could even get rid of that, that would also give you some more space.
What?
The two.
They're not included in the signage area.
That's not part of it.
Oh, that's not part of it, it's the.
That's just the stand.
That's a very good idea, you put your telephone number, stuff, we're not advertising anything. Take that off, and now you're down to need even, what, maybe a couple of square feet extra? I won't whine anymore.
You've met us, you've met us halfway, so, I don't know, does that work? You guys have to tell us, does that work or not?
I don't know how, what we'd do with the sign, I don't know.
That's already built, you want to just add.
Oh, this sign is here already?
Yeah, the sign's there, we're just asking for the changing.
We're just adding interchangeable letters.
So can this come out?
We're just asking for the two lines of the changeable letters, that's it, nothing else.
The sign's already up there?
Yeah, and it's not lit.
Top part of it is up there.
Yeah.
The part that says the Goddard School and all that, that exists right now. But again, the events that you're gonna have are probably pretty standardized, open house, family fun day, I'm just making up some things, okay? Like Mary says.
That's already there.
You're entitled to freestanding signs for a limited amount of time, six, six times a year, right?
Six times a year, two weeks.
So why can't you have a freestanding sign made up that says open house, April twenty-third, or whatever, just open house this Saturday, and you put it out? However many times you need to do that.
Or you hang another sign.
We could, Goddard, I mean, it's a franchise, so they suggest, they give us different, so if we have a theme for the summer, they want us to put that in the interchangeable signs too. So like every month, the theme changes, they have a little.
So are you telling us that this sign is part of the franchise requirements?
Yes, that is, that is how all.
They can't impose.
They will show, it's based on the town.
Right, right, right.
Okay, all right.
Always subject to town.
It's a standard sign for Goddard.
And you have your corporate colors thing, but the town is the ultimate.
Then they should've thought about that when they put that bigger sign on the building.
When this. Cause Goddard was in charge of that. Came to the planning board for approval, it was known what school it was, it was pretty clear right from the beginning what this was. So again, they, I understand the logo changed, if you can get us some documentation that speaks to the logo changing and the square footage changing, and within, you know, since the time that you got your planning board approval, at least you give us something documented that something has changed, cause all our things haven't changed.
The planning board is called the learning center.
Tara has a good thought.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that you take this, this learning experience, it wasn't even called the Goddard.
Okay.
That was nuts.
That was.
All right.
That's a good thought.
This comes out, and this moves out, and when there's no event, this, they could.
It's already.
But it's there already.
It's there already.
Still, you still work with it, you still work with it.
If it had to be adjusted, it could be.
Can that black section come out? The phone number, the phone number in the GoddardSchool.com.
With void letters.
Can a sign company adjust, so, you know, they can probably cut the sign.
But what's the square footage of that portion?
And then move that up.
I know, but for us to go forward with that.
Then you're asking for one or two square feet, and if that's it.
That's.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So, do you have any sense of what that measurement is, that we can take that off of your variance request, and then at least we can move forward with it? All right, are we okay to advertise with that change? Are you okay with that change?
Well, again, to me, I mean, eight square feet is, is something, you know, again, it's minimum, it's less than ten percent, and why are we nickel and diming our applicants?
I hear you.
So in situations like this, I mean, unless there's a compelling reason, you know, again.
The sign, the sign exists.
Correct, the sign exists.
Biggest concern here. Motion to advertise?
I mean, I think we beat this one to death.
Second.
How are we advertising?
For their request?
Yes, as requested.
And then we'll just see how it ends.
Advertise for August.
Yeah.
All right, motion to advertise second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next month, see Pam for your instructions.
But make sure you have all the paperwork to support your application.
Please.
Photographs, you know, for the, for the.
Breaking in.
And extra copies for.
Yeah, thank you.
Every, and more. Correct, correct.
All right, item number fourteen, appeal three, six, four, three, Truitt, Christopher Truitt, six Wilton Berry Court, Hobel Junction, is requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance and a three hundred and thirty square foot size variance for a proposed thirty-foot by thirty-six-foot, one thousand eighty square feet detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, let's move off of signs and go to garages. A thirty by thirty-six-foot garage is quite significant. Can you explain the need for it? We've actually asked people for floor plans as to justify why that square footage.
Okay, basically for storage in a workshop.
What kind of workshop?
Uh, just for myself.
Woodworking, mechanical, what kind?
Mechanical.
Working on cars?
Cars.
Okay.
My own cars.
This is not a business operation?
No, it's not a business, no, just a car enthusiast man cave.
Ford Porsche.
Some man tunnel.
Do you have a garage on the house?
Excuse me?
Do you have an existing garage in your house?
There is an existing garage.
All right, and why do you need the twenty-foot sideline variance?
Uh, the plot plan, the survey plan that I submitted, doesn't really show the topography of the, of my existing lot, and if you're looking at it, you would normally just say, well, why can't you just build on the left? And the reason for that is the topography of the land is about, the last third of the property is a rocky hill.
Okay.
Also, I submitted a picture on the left side of my property is prone to flooding, I included a picture of that as well. And there's also the issue of the septic tank and the septic fields run in that direction as well. And if I were to put one on the left-hand side, that's pretty much on the side of the house, not in the back, because there's only so far back I can go because of the rocky hill behind me. Also, it would be in the sightline of everybody, because it would be in, pretty much in the same line as the house. Whereas if I built it on the right-hand side, it would be tucked in behind the house, and between myself and my neighbor, and the neighbor behind me, it's heavily wooded and hilly. Now, I wouldn't even have started the proposal of having a variance, but my, I approached my neighbor and she was very supportive of it. She wrote me a letter giving me her support as well.
That's fine, can you justify the size, though? All right, seven hundred and fifty square feet is what you're allowed by code, so, or, what's the square footage, the footprint of your house?
Uh, two thousand, or sixty square feet.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent of this footprint.
And what's the footprint?
A thousand eighty, so he'd be entitled to twelve.
No, what's the footprint of the dwelling?
Not the foot, not your total square feet, just the footprint.
The footprint is two thousand, yes.
He'd be allowed twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's on the survey.
Oh, well, then he doesn't need a variance for the size.
Not for the size.
Okay.
So just for, and you can't go any further away from the property line?
I told you to do that.
That's all right.
I could probably go up to ten.
You probably could go what?
Uh, ten.
Up to ten feet away.
Another, another ten feet?
Another five.
Five, five.
Oh, okay.
Move it, move it further from you.
So instead of a twenty-foot sideline variance, you'd only need then fifteen?
Correct.
That's better.
Would that affect the rear setback, though?
No, the rear.
It does.
Yeah, you're right, it might come.
You have to come forward a couple of feet and.
Or come forward a couple of feet.
Come forward, yeah.
Yes.
If you could do that, that would help.
Sure would. Yeah, so you'd move ten feet from your prop, from your neighbor's property, and then move a few feet further from the rear.
Keep the fifty foot in the back.
In the back.
Of course, I could do that.
Yeah, that, that.
All right, tell me about this shed.
Uh, the shed was there when we purchased the house.
Okay.
This is going on my third year in the house.
It's in the front yard.
It's in the front.
There's, and the survey shows that it's ten, ten feet by sixteen, I think it says.
Yeah, ten and a half by sixteen and a half.
Is it really that big, did you ever measure it?
I haven't measured it myself.
Because if it's over a hundred square feet, it requires a permit, and it's gonna require a variance to stay in that location.
What's that shed's usual?
Garden.
You gonna move that to your garage when you?
Probably, I won't need it after.
You won't need this shed, I mean, if you're gonna take it down.
Seriously, will you not need it?
Probably not.
We gotta deal with a variance for that as well.
Right.
That's the issue.
Well, I would just simply move it.
And it's, it's on a corner lot. It's on, it's.
Yeah, I didn't like it when it purchased the house.
I don't know why that location, it's just.
So you don't like it there anyway?
I don't like it there anyway.
Okay.
All right, so we're, we're.
You promised us we're going to move it. You move it or get rid of it, we don't care.
But the previous understood me. Where are you going to move it to? Because we can't.
Uh, the same side of the property, but further back past the fifty-foot setback.
You have fifty feet on both sides because they're both frontage on the road.
Right.
Understand?
Oh, okay.
So right now it's twenty-eight point six, so if you want to just go back, would you go all the way behind the house?
He's got to go behind the rear line of the house.
Would you go that far back, do you understand what we're saying?
Uh, I see what you're saying, I could do that.
He can't, he can't have it in front of the front line on either side.
I understand that, we might be able to.
Oh, so it can't be on that whole side of the, of the lot?
Right.
Yeah, because he's got two front, front, yeah, he's got, he's got two front yards.
Can he go near the garage?
If you got it behind the, well.
Well, or we, or again, you, you're working with us, so.
It's easiest if you just give a variance there.
I'm sorry, so the setback on the left-hand side of the lot is fifty feet as well?
Well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
But also.
But you'll also have to worry about the rear line of the house again.
Right.
From that side.
From that side.
So it really puts it only in that little square. The upper right hand corner there. That's the only place it's really allowed.
Or directly behind the house.
Yeah.
Do you have a well?
No. Community, community well.
So where do you, where do you think you're going to move that to? Tell us where you think it makes sense and then let's see what variance you'd need to deal with it.
To the left of the garage?
That's fine.
You should put it right by, by the garage.
You don't need a variance then.
You want to move the garage over five?
He just needs the permit, only the permit, right. If you put it next to the garage, to the left of the garage, you don't need a permit.
To the left of the garage.
You don't need a variance, you still need a permit.
Exactly.
If it's over a hundred square feet.
Right. Which corner of this it is.
According to that, it, it doesn't look that big.
Yeah. I mean, I'll take, take measure myself, but.
Yeah.
You can put it there.
All right, so as long as you're, you agree to move that, then we don't need to deal with that there.
No variance is possible.
You're going to be joining him in that band with me if I don't.
Put the shed in the garage.
Put a little bump on, on the garage.
So the shed's going to move and the garage is going to go over ten feet more?
Five, five.
Five feet more, okay, that's what I thought.
Could be ten feet away.
So now it's going to be a fifteen-foot sideline variance.
And not a size.
And not a size variance, right. Okay.
And. And where is the documentation of the house? It's two thousand, the footprint is two thousand square feet?
Uh, it's on the survey itself, all the measurements are on the survey. For the footprint.
Okay. The footprint is two thousand or the to, total square foot, square footage of the.
The footprint of the house itself is two thousand.
Two thousand.
Dare I ask, what's the square footage of the house?
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six, so it's only one-story house except one part has a second story?
Uh, there's, there's two stories.
Then you can't have a two thousand square foot footprint?
That's what my surveyor told me.
Well.
I mean, the measurements of the house are right there. It's right on the survey.
Is it a split level maybe?
Right.
No.
I think what happens is he's doing the footprint and then for total square footage, he's including the garage, which maybe wasn't included. In the calculations of the square footage.
There's a room above the garage.
Yeah, but there's something, there's something that.
See, our, our copy doesn't have the dimensions.
I think we better go with that other variance.
Total square footage, take, take.
Yes, the size variance. I don't think you have a two thousand square foot. Basement.
That's the number he could have given.
It's better to advertise it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we ask though that these calculations be done ahead of time?
Good thought.
That the documenta, that you get the documentation before this actually goes on the agenda so that we're clear what the, because an applicant could tell us anything and.
Exactly.
We can put it into.
What do we know until somebody sits here and actually figures out, well, it's eleven feet this way.
Even with my glasses, I can't even see these numbers on here.
My arms are growing longer to see it, don't worry. Okay, so, so we're going to leave in the variance for the size of the garage, but in that case, we want to ask for a floor plan as to, to understand why he needs a garage this big. As we have asked for in the past. I mean, we've had people who have said that they have special cars, that they need the extra storage and things of that sort to justify.
Floor plan would be helpful.
Why? Why this size?
A floor plan that he could draw up, right? That he could do himself.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, to some extent, if, so your, the sides of your house are thirty-three point two and thirty.
Yeah, but it's about fifty feet long, so thirty-five, because you have all these things going out, thirty-five by fifty, I mean, he's over.
Where's fifty?
Add them all up, fourteen.
I'm seeing twenty-one and fourteen.
You got eleven, fourteen, seventeen and that. You got fourteen plus six point five, seven point four, twenty-one. That adds up, I rounded up a little bit to fifty.
Yeah, it's about forty-nine.
All right, okay, got it.
So you're fifty by thirty-five.
Is seventeen fifty.
Yeah, so he's getting up towards the two thousand.
And he has this other little porch area.
Yeah.
All right.
But.
But I'm sure where there is two thousand square feet, but so the question is, do we want a floor plan for his use?
Yeah.
Can you bring it to, we'll, I think we can still schedule for public hearing and then we'll review it at the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
So a floor plan for the existing house?
No, a floor plan for what, how you're proposing is the garage. We need to justify why this size.
Sure.
Okay, we want to document the file as to why you're, why this size. You should be given the variances to have this size, that, that there is a planned use for.
Yes, we're.
Okay.
Like, for example, if you're going to have your cars and you've got maintenance and workshop and you, you, tools and whatever, so you just lay them on a plan so that we know that.
Right.
Thirty by thirty-six area is going to be used in such a way.
Okay.
All right, whatever it is.
It's super detailed, but enough detail to give us a good idea of what you're doing.
What the intended use is.
Correct.
Please, and it's going to match the house?
Yeah, it's a construction.
Yeah, what's the finish going to be, twenty-one?
Whatever my wife wants.
Not quite enough answer.
Which matches the house.
The right answer, but not good enough for us.
She gets to pick the outside, you pick the inside.
Also, also the height.
Yeah, how tall is that?
Twenty-five.
No, that's okay.
So there's a second story to it?
No, it's just, um, I don't know what the pitch size is going to be, but.
I did allow forty-five feet.
No, I know, but we're asking, let's ask a question.
It'll be a higher ceiling, it'll be a twelve-foot ceiling plus the pitch of the roof.
Okay. So there's not a second floor?
No.
Okay, for storage or anything like that.